Do I replace the flag?
Okay. Wait, okay. Now we can do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. We'll run through the agenda very quickly. We'll start off with the minutes, the reading of the agenda and the minutes from the May 21st meeting. We'll go through community relations announcements in open forum. We have three appointments tonight. First will be a reappointment to the Insurance Advisory Committee. That will be followed by an appointment for the Sex Offender Bylaw Committee, the police representative. And then we have appointments for a full-time and part-time police officer. That will be followed by scheduled appointments, 6:45, a dangerous dog hearing. And then 7:15, four score, the amended host agreement and development agreement. Then we'll move into new business with the electronic signboard policy, the bid award, the nice little Columbus request for a toll road, CMG proposals for Ford Jester Hill Road and 54 North Main Street, Papa Gino's, change of ownership in their common Vic, review modifications to special permit and site plan regarding four score, a review of the site plan for Charlton Realty Co. Trucking Center and Repair Garage. Under old business, we have two items. A very quick update on the independent auditor for the independent broad-based investigation and the sex offender registry and residence. We'll have any BLS committee reports, if there are any, as well as policy reviews. There are eight of them listed. I'm not sure if there are any updates for that.
That would be Donna Folio from auditing and accounting.
And then the student select person's report, but we're going to take that after the announcements in open forum. The town administrator report, if there is one, we will read it. She's out sick today and will not be here. And then our annual meeting will be continued on June 12th at 7:00 p.m. at the Charlton Middle School. And the next regular board of selectmen's meeting will be June 18th at 6:30 p.m. here in the selectmen's meeting room. And then we will adjourn.
Okay. Through the chair. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of the regular meeting from May 21st of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, may it be discussed? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Noble, for making the motion.
You're welcome.
Move on to...
Community relation, uh, announcements?
Getting down there. There we go. All right. Representative Peter Garant will hold office hours on Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. in the selectmen's meeting room. Road closings, Brookfield Road to the town line will be closed daily from June 3rd to the 15th, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for reconstruction. It will be open to local traffic only. Harrington Road will be closed daily for construction from July 8th to the 19th, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and will also be open only to local traffic. The electronics recycling event will be Saturday, June 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Federated Church of Charlton, 64 Main Street. See the calendar on the town's website at www.towncharlton.net for the items that can be recycled. If you have questions, please contact green day recycling ma@gmail.com. The annual town meeting will be continued on Wednesday, June 12th. Is it Wednesday or Tuesday?
So I just...
Wednesday.
Wednesday, June 12th at 7:00 p.m. at Charlton Middle School Auditorium. And the household hazardous waste electronic collection day will be Saturday, June 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Casilla Waste Services Facility at 165 Barefoot Road, Southbridge, and proof of residence will be required. There is one other announcement. I got the text and I got the email as well. So if anyone was signed up for notifications on the alert system, you would also know now that the Potter Village Road Bridge is open.
Excellent news.
After all this time.
Three or four years now? Has it been three or four years?
Yeah.
But it is now open, finally. So is there anyone here for open forum? Hey, Todd.
Hey, Todd. Good evening. I'm Todd Gerard, your conservation agent. Excuse me. I'd just like to discuss tonight. Saturday, July 20th, we're having a garden tour that's going to finish up at Fay Mountain Farm. Uh, this is a two-town tour. We're teaming up with the town of Dudley and their women's club. And we're starting the tour off at the, um, the Black Tavern. That's up by Nichols College at 10:00 a.m. So we're, we're starting off with like a history motif, going with the Black Tavern.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going across Dudley and Charlton to numerous town gardens. And we're also going to the Overlook Facility to see their great garden facility they have there. And we're going to finish it out at Fay Mountain Farm and go back to the history again to incorporate how Fay Mountain Farm had a rooftop garden and got its water from the top of Fay Mountain Farm with an aqueduct. Uh, we're going to tie in the Think Blue Stormwater Initiative and have a, um, a rain garden demonstration. I'll be putting on how to design and, and design and build a rain garden at Fay Mountain Farm on the 20th. So I just wanted to really get, um, get the word out there. It's summertime. I think we've had enough rain and clouds. Uh, I want people to start thinking happiness and gardening. And maybe I'll see a lot of people out joining the women's club and getting out and enjoying our gardens across town. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, can I piggyback on that?
Sure.
Fay Mountain Farm is still selling community shares.
Oh.
Half shares and full shares. You can get it at their website, faymountainfarm.org.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else here for open forum? No, we'll move on to our...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, can I make one very quick public service announcement?
Sure.
Real quick, exactly. For those of us who ride motorcycles, please be aware, um, try to refrain from putting your grass clippings into the road. There have been multiple times over the past week where I think people have inadvertently been doing it. If you don't ride a motorcycle, just be aware that if you, that basically it's like riding on glass. Uh, once you hit them, it literally, your, your tires are, are all over the place. So please, again, do everything you can to not put them in the road. See, that's quick. Yeah. Well, I mean, at least for me.
Roger Cludier, 17 Coben Road. I just want to mention excellent, but you think of motorcycles. I ride a bike.
Oh, you don't...
It's the same problem with a bike as a motorcycle. So I just want to second what he said, just to include bicycles.
Roger, I've seen you ride. You ride faster than I do. So I mean, I have to do that.
Oh, if you do that, no one gets hurt.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so our first appointment. Oh, my bad. I forgot we're taking this out of order. Anyone do the student select person's report?
Yeah, um, I don't have too much to add. The year is coming to a close and finals start this week and we'll finish up next week. Uh, the freshmen are taking bio MCAS today and tomorrow. And the seniors graduated on Sunday from the DC, at, at the DCU Center. Um, also, both of the mock town meetings went very well. Dudley was actually a little bit different from Charlton. Mr. Starcheski did it, um, in a way that more mirrors Dudley. So the person that I was training was super involved. We got kids to come up and represent members of the board, just like we did in Charlton. And, um, it's actually supposed to take off as part of the civics program next year for eighth graders. It's part of their curriculum and he wants to turn it into a project based on learning experience. So Dudley is guaranteed to continue happening.
Thank you. Can I just say that our student select person, Anya Grandowski, has done an amazing job the last two years putting together these mock town halls for the students. And we are so lucky to have you. Thank you, Anya.
Yeah, thank you, Anya.
And that's why she'll keep coming back. All right, thank you, Anya. So we'll move on. Our first, uh, appointment of resignation. Number one is a reappointment to the Insurance Advisory Committee. Since we don't have a town administrator, we'll just read right through this. The Insurance Advisory Committee appointments expire on May 31st, 2019. The board is asked to reappoint the following until May 31st, 2020. Primary Insurance Advisory Committee members, Donna Folio, Paul Morelli, Harold Peel III, Bob Barton, Deborah Chikorini, and Cheryl Hanson. And the alternate Insurance Advisory Committee members, Jessica Lorenz, Mary Stone, Ben Locke, Ashley Ingram, and Jason Martaci. It is recommended that the board make the appointments as requested.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. The next appointment is the Sex Offender Bylaw Committee for a police representative. Let me get to that. At the board's May 21st, 2019 meeting, the board formed a Sex Offender Bylaw Committee consisting of the following: two selectmen, two citizens-at-large, and one police representative. Ms. Noble and Mr. Singer have been appointed as the selectmen representatives. You are asked to appoint Police Chief Maxfield as the police representative. We have not received any requests from citizens as of yet and will bring those to you when we do. The board also requested that the town administrator work with the police chief and our cable access coordinator to post sex offender information on cable. In speaking with Chief Maxfield, he said that there are specific cautions for this. I would respectfully ask, the town administrator would respectfully ask the board to allow herself and the committee, when it's fully formed, time to review those cautions. Town council had provided some information from the original bylaw and will be reviewing that as well.
Motion on the appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Does the chief have anything to say on this or...
I've already talked to Robin.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Thank you. That being said, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at all? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to the committee, chief. The next appointment, convenient that you're sitting where you are. Full-time and part-time police officers. Attached is a letter from Chief Maxfield. Asking the board to appoint Special Officer Jennifer Burdette to the full-time patrolman opening due to the promotion of Daniel Dow from detective sergeant to lieutenant. Ms. Burdette has been working full-time hours at the Charlton Police Department as a special officer since April 14th, 2019. With her up-to-date training and years of experience, she has been a welcome and valuable addition to the department. After a discussion with the command staff and the human resource director, they're all in agreement with this promotion of Ms. Burdette, Chief Maxfield would recommend the appointment contingent upon successful reinstatement and completion of the lateral transfer process through civil service. The town administrator recommends the board make the appointment. There's... Well, let's do, uh...
Do we want to do separately or together?
Yeah, do you want to do them separately, chief, or together?
Whatever. If you like, Mr. Chairman.
No, let's do them separately then.
I will make a motion to make the appointment and congratulations, assuming that this goes well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Burdette, full-time police officer position. Is there any discussion? Chief, anything?
No, we're just happy to have her and, uh, you've, um, she's been working full-time for us, filling in while we've had a vacancy and that's worked out real well. She fits in real well. And, uh, she's been bouncing around the town hall, a little bit meeting everybody and should be a welcome addition.
So you have a family on Oxford PD?
Yes, I do.
So that could come in handy if we have to cross lines, right? Rease the wheels back and forth.
She's a very large gentleman in the back.
There you go. So if we have to cross, oh, we just call.
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to Charlton.
Welcome to BZ.
We have another appointment for a part-time police officer. Attached is a letter from Chief Maxfield stating that they currently have two openings for permanent reserve intermittent police officers due to one of their intermittent officers leaving for employment in another town and the other, Officer Bullock, having been promoted to full-time patrolman. Part-time officers are an inexpensive way to enhance the patrol force and to reduce overtime. They currently have the opportunity to hire an individual who is at the top of the civil service list, Michael Fornier. Mr. Fornier is a graduate of American Military University with a Bachelor of Arts in Intelligence Studies and is a veteran of the United States Air Force. He is willing to self-sponsor to the full-time MPTC Academy. Therefore, Chief Maxfield is requesting the appointment of Michael Fornier off of the civil service list to the position of permanent reserve intermittent police officer contingent upon passing the required background investigation, physical and psychological exams, as well as successful completion of the full-time MPTC recruit academy.
Press the background. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Chief?
Again, we, uh, we're fortunate to have, uh, an individual who served his country, uh, also a resident of the town, um, and who is perfect in every way for the job. I'm starting to hire him by the pound now. So, so, uh, we're, we're happy to fill that spot, uh, with somebody very deserving and very qualified.
Excellent. Awesome. And if I, if I could, to you and Ms. Burdette, and I know the chief and, yeah, I feel I've heard this before. So the police department that you're joining, as far as I'm concerned, is the best in the state. From the patrolman right through the command staff, so the people you're working with are the best in the business. And I think it's a testament to the quality of the members of this department that everyone wants to come to Charlton. So welcome both of you. Just wanted to get that out there. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. And Karen, I had the same thought that you were like going in.
That was the chance for the camera.
Okay.
All right. You know, we're five minutes behind. That's pretty impressive.
Not bad. So our next appointment, or our first scheduled appointment, is for 6:45 p.m. It's a dangerous dog hearing. We do have a sheet of procedures we need to follow. So I will ask anyone who is here to participate in this discussion needs to please sign in the sheet at the table in the front. Anyone who wants to speak, when we ask, will also be sworn in. If you are not signed in on that sheet and sworn in, you will not be allowed to speak during the hearing.
So even if you think you might be speaking, I think it's fair to say you should sign in.
So if you sign in, stay up front, just so you can be sworn in too.
Just standard, you know, swear to tell the truth, whole truth, et cetera. Nothing about firstborn child. We did away with that. Something about bylaw, I don't know.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. So assuming that everyone has now signed in. Anyone who signed in to speak tonight, if you'd please stand up, raise your right hand. Yeah, so I'll start with them. We have a quorum of the board's selectmen. This public hearing is called pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, on the complaint of a nuisance dog by reason of excessive barking owned by Kevin and Wendy DeJesus of 23 McKinstry Drive, Charlton, Mass. All those who are here to give testimony have signed in. Please raise your right hand and we repeat the following oath. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Ms. Karen Sanchez.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony...
Do solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony...
I am about to give in this matter will be the truth.
That I am about to give in this matter will be the truth.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Acknowledging this oath under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Acknowledging this oath under the pains and penalties of perjury.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. I'll read how we're going to go through this. We'll start off. The complainant is not here due to heart issues. So the animal control officer will be speaking.
Um, actually, that complainant is here.
Oh. We'll change that.
And there are other complainants as well.
Okay. So in order, I went with what I was told, so that's okay. We will go then with complainants first, in order. Then the animal control officer, who will also report, I guess, on behalf of the police department, unless that's changed too, Mary. Sorry.
Excuse me. Can I make a suggestion and you can do whatever. Sometimes it's good to do like a summary first and then have the, the other people come up.
Uh, that's fine. We can do that. I'm just reading the order. We'll go in and we can settle with the summary once they know who's going to get to talk and when. After the police, then we will get testimony from anyone else who wants to testify. There will be questions after that from members of this board. So I'd ask this board to hold your questions until after all the testimony. And then after all testimony, the hearing will be closed. And then there will be deliberations from this board and any decisions. Those decisions, I can talk today. Those decisions can be to take action tonight or to defer, to speak to council. That's up to this board. And I would also ask everyone who's here that participates in any conversation tonight to be respectful, courteous, professional, and address the board. Do not turn and attack people or talk to them or call them, you know, anything disrespectful. I want it to be an efficient hearing. Kelly, do you have? I don't actually have a summary. Do you want to provide one?
Actually, Kelly, one second. I'm just through the chair, just one quick thing. Just for clarification, and this may be to the ACO. I know what we have written was regarding the complaint of a nuisance dog by reason of excessive barking. I'm assuming that's just static language we used in the past. I believe that there is a much different reason for the nuisance dog tonight. That would be more specifically the dogs getting out and the unfortunate incident with some goats that were, that were killed. So just so everyone's aware, we, we do understand why everyone's here. I think this is just language that we've used in the past, so...
Goats and, it's like horses.
Correct, yeah, no, exactly, correct, yep. So thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. Kelly, make it.
Okay, um, so I'll just do, read the statement of facts regarding two Siberian huskies owned by Kevin and Wendy DeJesus, 23 McKinstry Drive, Charlton, Mass, 01507. And some of these calls are from Charlton and some are from Oxford because the dogs live in Charlton, but they come into Oxford sometimes. So in Charlton, on July 8th, 2017, Wendy DeJesus reported a missing husky and that it has a zapper collar on. On July 14th, 2017, I received a call from Gail Leffert, 62 Old Southbridge Road in Oxford, that she had a black and white husky with an electric collar and no tags on her porch. She shut him in the fence until I got there and Kevin DeJesus was already out looking for the dog and arrived right after me. I notified the Charlton ACO. On July 17th, 2017, Kevin DeJesus reported two huskies missing to Charlton. On July 16th, 2018, Kevin DeJesus reported his Westie missing, which is a s- a different dog, a smaller dog. Um, that was to Charlton. And then on July 17th, Kevin DeJesus called me to report his older Westie that was found, that was missing, was found in the mud. On October 18th, 2018, Kevin DeJesus reported one husky loose to Charlton. On November 8th, 2018, Wendy DeJesus reported two huskies missing, again, to Charlton. And that on the same slip and slew noted 11-9-18, Husky at Oxford Kennel. Charlton Police Call Slip 11-9-18 and the number was, uh, 2-0-6-7-7. Received a call from Wendy DeJesus at 10:45 to report two huskies were missing. Oxford reports they have the dogs. See below. So we didn't actually, I didn't actually pick the dogs up that time. On November 9th, which is the same time, uh, same incident, but this time it was Oxford. Um, on November 9th, 2018, at 11:07, Laurie Rosson from 60 Dudley Road found two Siberian huskies in her yard. Ms. Rosson attempted to give them a treat and they took off towards Hope Ave. I got to the area just as the owners, Wendy and Kevin DeJesus from 23 McKinstry Drive, Charlton, were putting the second dog in their car on Faithway. On Monday, April 8th, 2019, again, this was Oxford, I received a call from a passerby stating that there were two huskies loose at the intersection of Conlon Road and Charlton Street in Oxford. I called the owner of the dogs, Mr. Kevin DeJesus, and let him know where the dogs were. I headed to the location and right as I got there, Mr. DeJesus called to tell me that he had both of the dogs secured. On Sunday, April 18th, 2019, 9:30 p.m., Kevin DeJesus called, um, my ACO phone to tell me that his two huskies took off. Mr. DeJesus called back at 7:00 a.m. on Monday, April 29th, to let me know they had just returned. On Sunday, May 5th, 2019, at 12:47 p.m., Virginia Goodall from 11 Old Oxford Road in Charlton called to report two loose huskies harassing her miniature horse, Thunder. The Goodalls' next-door neighbor, Mr. Campbell Hare from One Pond Lane, Charlton, saw the dogs biting at the horse and saw the horse kick at the dogs, dogger dogs. Mr. Hare and Mr. Goodall ran at the dogs with stick and chased them away. On Sunday, May 5th, Brenda Bishko from 13 Clara Barton Road called to tell me that two huskies were going after her two horses and she just chased them off. At 2:10 p.m., I received a call from the Oxford Police Department. Uh, the caller was Jerry Silvestri from 296 Main Street, Oxford, reported that there were two huskies loose at 3 Norwood Court. A woman at the scene captured the female dog Jade and gave her to Mr. DeJesus when he arrived at the Norwood Court area. I assisted Mr. and Mrs. DeJesus for several hours to capture the male dog, Cato. Mr. DeJesus said that his son left the ch- Mr. DeJesus said that his son left the chain link fence gate open and the dogs blew through the electric fence. On Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, at 10:44 AM, I received a call from Brenda Bishko stating that she saw a post on Facebook that there were two huskies loose on Old Webster Road in Oxford. I searched Old Webster Road but did not locate the dogs. I notified Mr. DeJesus that his dogs were loose again and he stated that his wife Wendy was looking for them. At 11:05, the Oxford Police Department informed me they had received a call from Robert Zaleski, 70 Old Webster Road, stating that two huskies just killed his goats and they were still on his property. I proceeded to Mr. Zaleski's property and secured the two dogs to the fence. Mrs. DeJesus arrived at 70 Old Webster Road and stated that she didn't wanna deal with the dogs anymore, they were her husband's dogs. Mrs. DeJesus also stated that the dogs should be put down. Oxford Police Officer Kenneth Mead responded to the complaint also, and he does have a report in, in his file. I brought the two huskies to the Oxford Animal Shelter for a 10-day quarantine and Mrs. DeJesus signed a surrender form for the 10-day hold. Ms. DeJesus explained that the dogs pushed open some boards under the deck in order to get out. Due to the fact that the dogs have been loose so frequently and the fact that when they're loose, they tend to be aggressive towards other animals, the town of Charlton has kept custody of the dogs for public safety reasons until the hearing authority makes a ruling. The DeJesuses had another pair of huskies that were frequently loose until they were hit by a car and died. That was in 2014. I have enclosed a copy of their complaint history as well because it shows a pattern of several of the DeJesuses' dogs being at large for a number of years. I don't know if you want me to read the summary of the other dogs or not, you guys got that.
I don't think it's necessary if you want. This goes back. It's actually quite a lengthy list on a spreadsheet, two and a half pages long. Where is the report from Officer Mead from Oxford? Is that in here?
Okay, yes, it is. It's, um.
This is a pretty thick one.
These are just all documentations of the calls. I think it's somewhat towards the end, but.
Still trying to find.
Sorry?
Kelly? Is this it?
That's just a call slip from that, that day, I believe. Yes, that's part of it. And there's also some pictures of the, of the dogs and goats. It is somewhat toward the end. I tried to put things in chronological order.
Can I read this out loud? Testimony from the police officer. So this is testimony from a police officer from the town of Oxford. On Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, I was assigned to the 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM shift in the Mark Cruiser Unit 09 in the center sector. At 11:04 hours, I was dispatched to 70 Old Webster Road to two stray dogs that had attacked and killed two goats. Upon my arrival, I met with Animal Control Officer Kelly Flynn and reporting party, Robert Zaleski, outside the barn at 70 Old Webster Road. I observed two husky dogs on leashes attached to the orange fence. I observed two dead goats inside the fenced-in area surrounding the red barn. It appears the two husky dogs jumped the fence in area and attacked and killed the two goats. Robert stated he had observed the two husky dogs inside the fenced-in area. Robert stated he went to retrieve his rifle to protect the two goats from the husky dogs. Robert stated when he returned with the rifle, the two goats had already been attacked and killed by the two husky dogs. Robert stated the two husky dogs attempted to leave the fenced-in area and he was able to maintain the dogs inside the fenced-in area until Animal Control Officer Kelly Flynn arrived on scene. One of the dogs' owners, Wendy DeJesus, arrived on scene. Wendy was apologetic for her dog's actions. Wendy said that her dogs escaped their property and she was driving around attempting to locate. Wendy said that her property has electric fence surrounding the property, but the two huskies, Jade and Cato, are not detected by it and have been getting loose recently. Animal Control Officer Flynn took possession of the two dogs and transported them back to the Oxford Dockhouse for a 10-day quarantine. Refer to Animal Control Officer Kelly Flynn for additional information. Distraught, this submitted Officer Kenneth Mead, Jr., Number 76, Oxford Police Department. So Kelly, if I can, are you going to talk any further on behalf of the police department or are you?
I, I guess, probably, at some point, probably, yes, like as far as recommendations go.
Okay, yep.
But you probably wanna hear from the other people first.
All right, so is the complainant himself here, the original complainant?
I'm actually the one that put in to have the dangerous dog hearing, but I do have several people here that were.
So if they'd like to speak, if we could take them one at a time?
Sure.
At their microphone and give their name and address before they speak? Yeah, I can. Well, 'cause that mean, I'll check them off because they may not have signed in in order. Your name?
Robert Zaleski.
All right, so thank you. And what would you like to share, board?
Well, basically, these goats were our pets there about a year old. My granddaughter raised them for the last year. We have a lot of time, money, not counting emotions that are involved in that. The other thing is, is I didn't even realize the history of these dogs constantly getting out. I mean, they're a nuisance, they're dangerous, they're out of control, and obviously, no one can control them. I have two other granddaughters. One's little, she doesn't really know what's going on, she just plays with the goats. My granddaughter that's here is nervous when she goes out there now. And the eight-year-old one refuses to even go in there with other adult. You know, I shouldn't have to worry if these dogs are gonna get out again. It's obvious they're gonna. And I, I won't, I talked to the owner, 'cause I know him, I know his family. I told him was, you know, restitution of a certain amount and the dogs I wanted put down. My granddaughter didn't. She said, let them go to a rescue, but somewhere where we don't have to worry about them. He agreed to pay me restitution, which he never had, so now I have to file small claims charges to sue him for the money. Besides that, it's just a safety thing. I mean, what happens if one of the kids were in there or stumbled on this? I mean, we gotta wait till these dogs hurt or kill someone? I mean, I want something done with these dogs, more than restitution, something, I don't wanna worry about getting out in my yard or my kids out in the yard for their safety, you know? Obviously, no one can control them, or if he can, at least, and I'm still not opposed for them only because of my granddaughter going to a rescue, but long as it's somewhere where they're never gonna bother us again. I mean, the, the report speaks for itself.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other complainants that wanted to come forward to make comments?
So this is Mr. Goodall, who owns the miniature horse, and Mr. Hare, his neighbor, who witnessed the harassment of the, or attack of the miniature horse.
Mr. Goodall and Mr. Hare, you said? Mr. Hare?
Okay, on a Sunday morning, Campbell came over to my house.
Could you talk to the microphone? Thank you.
Excuse me, I've had some surgery. On a Sunday morning, I think it was May 5th, is it? I'm not sure the date, but Campbell came running over and he said, there's two dogs attacking your horse. And we have a horse that's only about this high. And so we both ran out with sticks and yelling and hollering. And I also have two or three other small dogs, but they were, they were in pens. I was afraid that they might attack the small dogs. And he was also, I was afraid of him going in and biting the horse because he's, he's very small, his, his legs are only about as big as my wrist. So a big dog could bite right through and then you'd have to put the horse down. So I get scared and I yelled at the horse, at the dogs, and they took off. And then since then, this other stuff has happened, so I credit Campbell for coming over and saving us at the time.
Well, I, my name is Campbell. I did chase those two dogs off exactly twice. The first time I chased them off 'cause they were going after the, the little horse. Then the second time, I ran in and got Dave and told him to call the police, 'cause I didn't want him to go out into the, the little paddock and if, if he fell or something when all the commotion, you know, and when somebody goes down and a dog is in that type of a predatory mode, I was just worried for the old boy. And I, I did chase the dogs out and they, they seemed to, they left the second time.
Thank you. Any other testimony?
Well, the only thing is, Sunday, Kelly called to tell me the dogs were loose. And right away, I got that panicky feeling. The dogs are loose, so I, my wife and I were gonna go somewhere and we decided to stay home in case a dog showed up. So then Kelly in the afternoon called and told me they found them, they caught them. So I was relieved, but it, it's a very disruptive having this happen. We've had this horse about 20 years. So he's, he's a pet. But none of that, I've got four cats and three dogs, two dogs. And we have a lot of animals around, so I get scared when predatory animals are around that we could do some damage to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else here with testimony from a complainant side? Being none, is there anyone else here who would like to testify regarding these events or give any testimony? Do you wanna state your name?
Sure. My name is Jeremy Cohen and I'm representing the dogs and the DeJesuses. Just to, so I'm assuming everybody just testified from their side. I think we have all the facts out there. Just a brief statement with some facts from our side. It's not right what happened with these goats. And my firm, we represent responsible pet owners. So you could say then, why are you sitting here? Because we could all be better pet owners tomorrow than we are today. And in meeting with the DeJesuses and the team they've put together, I, I actually believe that we, we have a plan where these dogs could be, could be kept at their house without a problem. And that will come out. Now, there's been 15, the animal control officer read 15 different times that dogs from this house have got loose. Now, it's unfair 'cause, 'cause eight of them have nothing to do with these two dogs and this is a dangerous dog hearing about these two dogs, but now it's out there. It's absolutely their fault that these dogs get out. It rolls out to them. But I gotta ask 16 times, 15 times, where is the animal control officer? Where is anybody coming to their house and saying, you know, let's look at this? Why are they getting out 15 times in se, in six years? Let me look at your fence. So in January of 2019, animal control officer goes to the house to inspect the kennel. She notes that this is a fenced-in yard and she approved it. Did she look at the fence? Did she go, actually go in and, this is for a kennel license, did she actually go in and look around? This isn't her fault, but there's a lot of help out there. And I think that if they had had some suggestions like training, how to lease the dogs, how are they getting out so we can, we can stop that? Who are they getting out with? A lot of these, they were self-reported that the dogs got out, but also their son was a problem. And their son's probably known to the town and he's responsible for some of the times where the dogs, he was walking them and they were essentially set free. And that's not right, but they've took a measure with that and their son is, is out of the state as of May 21st. It's concerning to me, and I, I appreciate the, the words that are up there. I just want you to get to the right decision the right way. And it might be that these dogs should be put down. I don't think they should be. I think that's an extreme remedy for, for what they've done. When you can't contain the dogs, you don't kill the dogs, you improve the containment. And I'm very disappointed that nobody from, who should know more than my clients, has shown up and said, here's all the things you can do. I mean, there are hundreds of things you can do with these dogs to get them to not escape anymore. Fortunately, they have somebody on their team who will share some of the things that they've done. Of course, it's their responsibility too, but just as concerning about getting to the right decision the right way. There is no law, there's no authority. And this goes for everybody in this room, 'cause it could be any one of them, that this town has a right to hold these dogs right now. The 10-day quarantine is for rabies protocol only. You can look at the Mass Department of Agriculture CMRs, Mike Cahill, he would like her job for doing that. We're not pushing that. 141-57, the animal inspectors guidelines and the town bylaws, none of them address the fact that after the 10-day quarantine, you can hold them. Public safety, show me the law under which you can hold them. There is no law, it's an unfair taking. And that's concerning to me. That's more, that's equally as concerning as two dead goats because you can't just hold somebody's property like that. That's a violation of their constitutional rights. And they, they're calling, no, it's, it's, it's our choice. No, the law isn't a choice. And I've read two statements from the, from the goat owner. It's troubling to me because in the first statement to police officer, he says, I, I was there, I fed my goat, played with him from 8:30. He had an appointment at 10:30, left the house at 9:15 in the morning. He comes back, he told the police officer, when I come back, I see the dogs in the pen. Everybody's alive still. I go in the house to get my rifle. I come out, the dogs are, the goats are dead. So that would make it seem pretty obvious how, how the goats died. But then in his statement, in his own statement, his own written statement, which was provided to me today, he never mentions that. He never saw the dogs in there while the goats were alive. So essentially, he saw the goats, he says in his written statement, he left, after he left around 9:15, comes home around 10:30, doesn't check on them, goes in the house, at 10:50 comes out and sees two dead goats and sees our dogs in there. Anybody, and I don't know if the, if they killed the goats or not. I think we, we should assume they did so we can get some real remedies here. But was a proper investigation done? There's a certain way, the animal controllers rank number one in their class, there's a certain way to investigate these. If you look at these puncture wounds, did anybody do the investigation on the goats to see, was it these dogs? I've represented dogs that have blood on them with dead goats and it's not the dog, it's coyotes. So I just, I'm questioning the investigation. That's why I think it's important that we're getting a fair hearing here. So through, I'd like to listen, a little bit of testimony, especially about the remedies that have happened, to see if we can bring some sense of community, some sense of security to community. It is distressing that these dogs got out that much and I, I think we might have a way to deal with it. Unfortunately, rehoming them is not an option and I understand the animal control officer may have found a rescue, but it's pretty hard to place dogs with bite histories at a rescue, in, in my experience. So I'd like Linda Smith to speak to you about the dogs and the DeJesuses.
Did she sign in? Yes, she did.
I did, yeah.
Yep.
And I know this isn't court, and I, I, I might just ask her a few questions to get her prompted, but then she can, she'll just speak on her own, just to get it started.
Can I ask, are you a resident of Charlton or what's your relation to the situation?
Uh, no, I live in Enfield, Connecticut. I own Dog Watch of Western Massachusetts. So I put the electric, the second electric fence in for the DeJesuses.
Gotcha.
So why don't you just tell them what you know about the DeJesuses, when you got involved with them?
We got involved as it was brought up. They had two dogs previously, they had a wireless electric fence. I don't know that there was ever any training done. A wireless electric fence is. A wireless electric fence is not appropriate for huskies. There's lots of equipment out there. Unless you're a professional that understands the difference in product. They made a bad decision. And I don't think it was negligent, it was lack of knowledge. So they lost two huskies. Second time around, they approached me because they wanted to make sure that they had a good fence. Dog Watch is rated the best fence out there. They have a four-foot chain link fence. So we went and put a wire around the fence in addition to that. And I've never heard of an issue since, um, that pretty much solved the problems. It's my understanding that there are circumstances outside of the, them not honoring the fence as to why all these escapes have happened.
Can you explain that, not honoring the fence? What that means?
Um.
And also, when was the fence installed?
I think two and a half years ago.
When was the new fence installed?
Uh, the new fence would have been installed two and a half years ago.
No, I'm sorry. After this incident, you went up there, after the goat incident. You went to the house and you made some changes.
Um, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the property. There's a house, there's a detached garage. There's, for lack of a better description, there's a deck that connects the two.
Can I pause you for a second?
Sure.
Have you been to the house since the incident with the goats?
Yes.
Okay. They called you to come out, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so you're talking to them about this scene, correct?
Yes.
You're bringing them there now? And if I give you a couple copies just to follow along, just take a second. And, uh, why don't we hold it with the driveway? If it's to your bottom right hand?
If the dotted, oh, if the dotted line is the underground fence, the invisible fence?
Yes. And I have that at the top just for reference, so my hand is sort of right where the driveway.
I'd like to interject something here before we go there. That fence surrounded the entire house. The dogs were confined to the backyard. For the purposes of what we were talking about, that fence always worked in the backyard. The dogs weren't supposed to be out in front, so they were never trained to the front. So the statement they blew through the fence, the dogs didn't even know that fence existed out there. So.
Can I ask you though, with training for invisible fences, generally there is a flag system? And the dogs learn the flag and the zapping. But eventually, it's to get them to recognize the zap, not the flag.
Right.
So regardless of whether the fence is in the back or the front, they approached the invisible fence in the front, they would still got the zaps at the neck. There should have still been a warning, regardless of whether there was flags, whether they were trained at the front or the back.
No, they had such a, they're going full steam ahead.
So it wouldn't.
They have no idea, they're already through it before they even know.
Right, it would have hit them, but they're already through it.
Exactly.
Right, so that could happen in the backyard as well, though.
No, it can't because.
If they want, so wait, you're telling me if they're wrestling bad enough at the backyard that a husky or a big dog wants to get that deer or that animal, that they will knock through that fence to get it?
I'm telling you that for two and a half years, they've never done that.
Wait, the invisible fence is a backup.
I'm just asking, because I know other dogs who have been trained for invisible fences. And when they want something that bad, they will go through it, whether they're trained to it or not.
But the invisible fence isn't the only fence. There's also this four-foot chain link fence. So it's, it's a backup. As a standalone, I don't think.
As a standalone, yes, it wouldn't work for these dogs.
But I think it goes to her comment earlier about the invisible fences also aren't designed to stop dogs like huskies, dogs that are that big, that fast, and that aggressive.
Understood.
She just stated earlier.
But what she didn't agree, what you, hang on one second, before you correct that. There's a certain.
We have it on video, it's fine.
There's a certain strength or voltage. Do you know what it was on? Was it on the settings when they first signed up, two and a half years ago? Or was it on a stronger setting?
No, I do.
Did you change the setting?
I haven't, no.
Okay.
So there's a fence in the backyard, though?
There's a four-foot fence in the backyard. Our fence is in front of it. Why it was effective? Because they're not gonna sit in that correction zone for long enough to try to get over a fence.
So is it, would you consider it a fair statement that approximately seven times with these dogs, they've all been through the front yard?
There were circumstances be, having nothing to do with the fence, I think, that, why they got out.
But there have been seven times, regardless of fence, that they're, again, roughly?
Apparently so. I don't know anything about.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Yes, some of them were while the son was walking the dogs off the property. Can you just tell them, after this incident, you went to the house, what did you do to make improvements?
As was previously stated, um, they pushed out, they dug out through the, under the deck and got through that connector piece I was talking about.
This is in the center?
So now, this is in the center.
That's the last time that they got out and went to the goats?
Uh, we went back and wired that area so they can no longer do that.
What do you mean by you wired that area?
All of our fencing has wire in the ground. We, we took wire and extended it out and did what we call a garden loop. So that, that deck area and the stairs are now covered by an invisible fence, which they weren't before.
I'm just having a hard time believing that these dogs will ever be responsive to and any type of, kind of, fence or electronic fence.
Well, all I can say is, in that two and a half years, they never got out of that area. It wasn't the fence that was the issue.
So would it be safe to say, to use your own description, they didn't see the dog kill the goats? The goats were alive, the goats were dead. Unless they saw the dogs leave every single time, then it's also conjecture, whether they got out through that gap, got out through the front, or they could have gone through the back, unless someone actually saw where the dogs left every single time. We don't know where they got out of the property, just that they got out of the property.
Not all seven, some of them were, like I said, they were already off the property. But, yeah, we don't know, it's a fair statement. Okay. All good?
Thank you. Can I ask a question? Excuse me. I'd like to ask a question through the chair. So I'm looking at this map. And I see we have a four-foot wire fence going around the back.
Yep.
And on the interior of that, just under the ground, is the electronic fence.
Right.
When we look at the front of the house, we see just the electronic fence that goes underneath the driveway and around.
Right.
We don't see a four-foot chain link fence that goes around the front.
That's correct.
Well, then that's a problem. Because you're protecting the back. But you're doing nothing for the front that leads to the road that leads to other people's homes. So.
Are you asking me?
I'm just, I'm just pointing out the obvious, that to say that this is enclosed in a fence, that this property is enclosed in a fence, is a bit misleading. It's enclosed.
Our job was to contain the dogs in the backyard. That was our job.
And you did that quite well, because they were contained in the backyard.
Yes.
But there is a whole lot of property where they're not contained.
Yeah, that's beyond, that's beyond my end of things.
Okay.
That was our job, so that's what we did.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn.
So I just, I just wanted to point that out, that there is actually no four-foot chain link fence that goes around the entire perimeter of the property. It is just the backyard.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, that's kind of what I was trying to get at before of, it sounds like if they were, oh, their escapes have always been through the front yard. Hence my, I don't believe that the, that the e-collar is preventive enough, assuming that the front yard is the issue, because they're blowing right through it.
So assuming that it was always the front yard, they left from, we don't.
Correct. You're exactly right.
Well, again, as I stated, they were never trained to the front yard, so.
So one thing I've always found, and in the end, the bottom line is whether it's an invisible fence or a regular fence, and I think Kelly, I'm sorry, I'll let you get a comment. To me, it always comes back to, regardless of the fence, it's the owner. You know, and we've had other dog hearings, and I have two dogs, they both have the shock collars, they have to be on right, I get it. But you know what? I take responsibility, we actually, before we even got these, and they're both rescues, we hired a trainer to come in, because they don't train the dogs. Trainers train the owner, how to manage their dogs, how to care for their dogs. Both of my dogs are black lab mixes. They're not small, they're, one's a lab pit bull mix. It's pure muscle and fast as lightning. Loveable little thing, but we still won't take that dog out without that dog being on a lead. Even though we have the backyard blockaded, we'll take them out, we'll take them to run. Huskies are built for running. They can't be, they need to run. So again, all these conversations are wonderful, and I appreciate where you're coming from. You know, we all want to save the dogs. I want to save dogs, I want to save the dogs, but it comes back down to the owner. Right? And to me, if an owner shows a track record of irresponsibility, and that's where I'm going with this for me, is, I say violation, or just let's say instance, after instance, after instance, after instance. There's a track record here of, how many times does it happen? I understand, you made some very valid points, I'll give you that. But at some point, ignorance of the law doesn't absolve you of not following the law. Not knowing I should hire a trainer, not knowing I should get the fence under the ground, or I should secure this better, doesn't absolve someone of being a good dog owner, and of simple precautions. And especially to me, with that kind of a history, if you didn't see within yourself to get a trainer, so the trainer can train you on how to control your dogs, train your dogs, and teach your dogs, that, those trainers are invaluable. I just tell my dogs to go, they're great, they go. And you have, if you really care about your dogs, you make that investment.
And Mr. Chairman, just to extrapolate from that, in defense of Ms. Flynn, the onus, to your point, is, at least in my opinion, 100% upon the owners. It's not the onus of the ACO to say, well, here's what you could do. You know, if they were to ask the suggestions, I think that's one thing. But I refuse to lay the blame at all at our ACO. Clients, dog owners, families, they are 100% responsible. Now, if she were to, you know, if she were asked, if she, if she wanted to opine, that's one thing. But I refuse to lay one iota of blame whatsoever on our ACO. And as far as I'm concerned, she did exactly what she, what she was supposed to be doing. The only thing I would probably recommend in the future is bring these to us earlier. But outside of that, it's the owner's issue to solve a dog problem. If a dog escapes seven times, at some point, someone has to look in the mirror and say, okay, what can we do? And perhaps that is a proactive phone call to the ACO to say, I'm at wit's end, I need your help. Now, if she refused at that point, that's a conversation that we're having. But again, just, just to go on the record officially, again, I appreciate the impassioned offense, I really do. But I will not blame our ACO at all on this. So Kelly, just, I want you to make sure you're aware.
Did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Actually, I think it's a way back to, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, go back to the animal control.
I do have a few comments about that. We, I did have some conversations with the Jesuses, and they informed me, you know, when they did add the, they originally had a wireless, um, electric fence. I think that's where, it was a little misunderstanding. I think the first fence was wireless. And the second fence that Linda installed.
That's right.
Is a wire in the ground that follows the exact shape of the fence in the backyard. And it's not like the Jesuses haven't done anything to try to keep the dogs in. They have. Huskies are very smart. These particular dogs, and I, my personal feeling is it's Cato, the male dog, but I can't really prove that. But, um.
Men always cause problems.
It's just when he goes out in the, at the kennel where he's at now, he goes out, he literally looks around like this. The other dog plays ball with me, and he's scoping everything out. And, um, but, but we did have conversations about, you know, what could be done. And they were already doing some of the things that I would suggest. But huskies are known for being escape artists. When they do get out, they run and run and run, they love to run. And there's two of them together, which makes it more of like a pack mentality, let's go. Um, so I think that makes the situation different too. They actually do have one other husky that, to my knowledge, has never been loose. I don't know that for sure, but to my knowledge, he's never been loose since Sid.
Did you want to say something?
Can we also?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
That's why, I was, I was asking her, yeah.
My bad.
Oh, thank you.
I just wanted to explain this. Sorry, I'm gonna get.
It's okay. Do you want to take a minute?
The backyard is contained. The fences and the gates and all that.
Can she sit down and speak into the microphone?
Sorry.
It just has people at home, so they can hear.
And if you want to take a minute and come back up, you can.
Yeah, while she's taking a minute, let me share with you a few other things that they've done. I, you're absolutely right, it's the owner's work. But they were letting, leaving their dogs in the yard and leaving the house. You said, you can't do that. So they're, they're not doing that anymore. I mean, that's, that's a problem. And, and I don't know where you're supposed to get this information. A lot of it is probably common, common knowledge, is what I hear you saying. So that's an improvement right there. You bet?
Yeah.
If you need more time, though, is that?
The backyard is contained, is all gates. There's no way that they can get in the front yard unless they go through the gates. They don't even go out the front doors at all, or any of the doors. My son was a problem. He left gates open. He, half of the reports that you got, they didn't escape from my house. My son was taking them for a walk, and he put the leash down to go pee, and they took off. So that's more than, I think five or six of them is from him. So they didn't escape out of my yard. It was his negligence.
Can you, now that you're on the gates, just tell them what else you've done with the gates.
There's a gate over here on the, on the left side, if you're looking at the driveway up. We put a padlock on it. There's no way anybody can get out of it. We do have pictures. There's another gate over here next to the garage. It's a six-foot thing. We just, this is all new stuff. We put padlocks on there. Plus, um, Linda came and did a zap line in front of this gate and the other gate. So they can't, the dogs won't even go near it. They're afraid of the beep. That's why, but, and the stairs going down into the driveway, that's where they got out the last time. They pushed the boards out from the porch, pushed my pavers out and got out. So she came and did a loop. So now, when they get to that, to that stairs, they're gonna get the beep. They won't even go over. This, the gate is only this high. The dogs can jump it, and they never did. It's, the zap line is there, so they're not gonna go. So the only way that they're gonna get out of my yard is if they open up my front door and walk out. That's why we, that's why we never put the fence in the front. We just contain them in the backyard.
Can I ask you a question, Wendy?
Sure.
Thank you. The line going around the front now, the underground line, is that new?
No, that was a, there was always a loop that went, that always went around the whole thing.
Okay.
It sounds like they haven't addressed the front.
Okay. So, um, so while the dogs have been in quarantine, I hear that you've been making changes to make your yard safer.
Right.
To contain the dogs more. Have you invited Ms. Flynn out to take a look at the measures that you've put in?
Yeah, she came out on the Thursday, before, last Thursday, she came out.
Okay, because, I mean, ideally, we would, I personally would like to see you work with the ACO so that we can come up with a solution that works for most everybody. I don't know that we'll come up with a solution that works for everybody. I mean, it would be ideal if we could, but this is a very difficult situation.
Yes.
So now, the underground fencing in the front. The dogs blew through that?
Yeah, because when they, when they got out from where the porch is, they, they went out like the side of the house.
But they can't, can they do that now?
No, because there's a loop there now, so they will get the zap.
Okay.
Before, there's like a gate there, and then there's a railing here. They went underneath my porch. The line is right at that spot.
It's right, okay.
So they can't, if they go to my, if they do get underneath the deck porch, they can't because we boarded it up inside, outside, upside down. We did everything. So if they do get underneath there, as soon as they get to there, they're gonna get the beep and the zap.
I, I did read where they had pushed boards out of the way to, to escape.
We reinforced, we reinforced everything. We went under, we had taken pictures. We did the, on the inside of the deck, all the boards are reinforced on the bottom. And on the outside, we reinforced all the, all the boards going across. And then like this one here, we put the gate up.
Right.
It's two feet in the ground, so they're not getting through that either.
What I hear is that this is causing a great deal of stress for you. This situation in general.
Yeah.
Is not pleasant for you? To have to go. To have to go through this, it's not pleasant for the dogs, or for the people who've lost their goats, or have had, or worried about their grandchildren, or their, or their pets, or their horses. And I worry that this won't be enough. That's my big concern, is that in spite of everything you've done, and I appreciate everything you've done, obviously, you've gone to great expense to try and keep the community safe. But I worry about what happens if this doesn't work.
Okay, if I may, another question. So how many times have the dogs gotten out? I have seven just from two thousand fourteen.
That was, that was two dogs. Those dogs, that's the thing.
So in total, two dogs, three dogs, regardless of how many dogs, how many times have the dog or dogs gotten out? Because I have seven just from two thousand fourteen alone?
Yeah.
At least seven that year. So if there are fourteen, and you're saying that half of them would have been not getting out, but your son laid them go. So if there were fourteen times, that means that there were seven times they got out on their own.
A few times were before the electric fence was put in.
I guess, but that also brings you to two questions I have, is if you take fourteen times, half of them will just discount, we'll even consider those. So seven, let's go down to even five. Only five times, the dogs got out. At what point do you, as a dog owner, decide either this is not the right property for these dogs, or I need to hire a trainer to come in and help me get these dogs trained? Or, or take action as far as the underground fence or something else, before it got to the fourth fence, the fifth fence, the sixth, the seventh? At what point in time do owners have to decide or realize that this is an ongoing issue, and we're gonna take action? Because it also seems like, and if I even discount more than half of them, that this wasn't gonna be rectified if it wasn't brought to the town with a complaint. That it would've just gone on, and it would've been another harassed horse, another dead goat, another grandchild afraid to go out. Because would these steps have been taken if the complaints weren't filed, and the animal control officer didn't have those dogs locked up, and we weren't sitting here today?
We've been making, my son left the gates open. And every incident that, which has just been recently, since we had the fence, the electric fence, they haven't gotten out. My son left the gate open, and that's how they got out. And then, this is just recently, I think they only got out three times since we'd had that fence. And two of them were because my son left the gate open.
So they only got out once, so?
Once, and that was, um, really.
Since the underground wire was put in.
Yeah.
Twice was because of your son, and so once they just got out because they got, they went out.
Yes, um, and we've been fixing it, we've been, we've boarded up everything, we've been doing everything we can. The only neglect that we have is not doing research on Huskies. Which we should've did. But I mean, they're lovable dogs, they're not violent. I can't believe that, that disturbs me. I have cats.
I think every dog is lovable, right? Dogs aren't pets, they're members of our family.
Mm-hmm.
As are goats and horses, right? People have their own pets. But, um, you know, as dog owners, and it's funny, I will quote my, the trainer we hired, he said flat out, he actually prefers when dog owners call him or another trainer prior to getting a dog. Because the trainer will go with them to the shelter, will go with them to help them look at their home, interview the owners, and help them find a dog that's appropriate for the family, for the owner, and for the property. So that you avoid these kinds of situations. And I, and I'll just put out there, I understand, to you, they're members of your family, right? But in the end, it doesn't necessarily mean that, in the, going forward in the future, that anything you can do is gonna guarantee that they're not gonna dig out or get out again. These Huskies are meant to be run. They need to be taken to places where they can run at length. Or they're gonna be just bushing to get out, because they need to run. That's what they do.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Noble.
The last thing I'd like to leave you with, um, and I want you to really think about this, is, is this the best living situation for the dogs? If you're not gonna think about, you know, for the neighborhood, it's obviously not a good thing when they escape. For you and your family, it's not a good thing when they escape. But what's, you care about the dogs. Is this a good living situation for the dogs, to put them in a situation where they risk being euthanized simply because they're following their natural instincts? And that's something you have to seriously consider, and I don't know that anybody has yet. But when you put them in a situation like this, where they're just gonna be themselves, and by being themselves, they're at, they're putting other people and other animals at risk, and thereby, they're putting themselves at risk of being euthanized. You, as the owner, if you really care about these dogs, have to do the responsible thing and not place them in that situation where they're gonna be in harm's way. So that's, that's what I wanted to leave you with, Wendy.
For the chair, a question. You mentioned when your son walks the dogs, that's when they get out. When was the last time you allowed your son to walk the dogs, and why did it take seven times?
When was the last time that he walked the dogs?
Other than, other than the fence.
You want to take a minute?
Yeah, do you want to swap up?
Is, just hang on, just hang on. Before you respond, just if I can briefly respond to something you said. Certainly, they, they never felt any pain from this, and, so they, they didn't change their behavior. And, but now they're feeling the pain. If they didn't walk, or they weren't taking it serious enough to find remedies before, what I can say is they're feeling the pain. And I, not that this matters, I wouldn't take a case if the client doesn't feel the pain. And we had a heart-to-heart, Kevin and I, because this is it. The next time, under the law, if there is even a next time, they could be, actually can be shot. But they can be taken, he can be, he could be, due time, some jail time and a fine. So it shouldn't come to this, but it has, and they, they are taking it serious now. And everything you mentioned are things they should've done, but things that they still can do. Getting training for themselves and the dog, putting something in the front besides just the, the electric fence. Fact is, one good thing is there's been no human aggression. Even when they've been chased with weapons and stuff, they haven't responded to humans. But the question that he had for your wife was, when's the last time that your son walked the dogs?
Well, first of all, when he took, when he took the dogs for a walk, what we did to try to prevent it was, we took the dog leashes away from him. I, I talked to Jeremy, and I didn't want to go this route, about my son. My son has a mental illness. The police know it. They've been to my house, I can't, probably over twenty times. We've done everything for him, put him in res bed, group homes, sectioned him, we've done everything. Where, so that's why when we say the problem was my son, he's not home, and that's killing us, because our son is not there. He's in a community apartment out in Tallahassee right now, he just left a month ago. I'm his rep payee because he's on SSA. Where, you know, that was the problem. And we, I mean, there were times where, when my wife had to work, and I had to work, I would either take him and drop him off at the movie theater, just because we knew we couldn't trust him with the dogs. My tenant upstairs, we'd be, we'd be making plans with him to keep an eye on the dogs for us. Um, I'd either drop him off at the movies, or I'd bring him to the center of OX, who'd give him money to go to Subway and that, hang out there until I finish working, and then I'd pick him up. So I mean, we have, and we're still willing to do more, whatever we have to do. Um, again, going back to that picture there, both sides, the garage and this other side, one side has a six-foot fence, the other one has a four-foot fence, they both have padlocks on it. They have a loop system on each side, going for the stairs and everything. And also, about the training, when Linda came and put that in, she came out, she didn't just come in and install it, she came out five days in a row to train my Huskies. And I can guarantee, I, I'm telling you, they have never, ever got out of that zap thing, ever. That's why we called her right away to come and fix the problem in the front. And honestly, we didn't think it was a problem at first, because they dug under the porch. They, you know the big paver blocks?
Mm-hmm.
That's what was there too. They, they pulled the boards, they went there, pushed the paver blocks. So since then, we fixed the boards and everything. I crawled under the porch, put chicken wire all against that first, so even if they did, they'd have that there.
Is he sitting here?
Yeah, that's the one side that we did.
So it's picture eight in the packet, he's referring to the very last page. I think that's the area where they got out, and that's what they rebuilt. Which is, another thing that needs to be addressed is Mrs. Zuluski getting paid for the loss of his pets. I know, he, he, Kevin had offered, he said he was, the first thing he said to me was, I'm paying him, I'm gonna pay him thirteen hundred. And then, the ask, the ask went up. So, with, he was gonna pay at sight unseen, he's, it's.
I'm sorry to interrupt, through the chair. Attorney Cohen, we're not here to discuss that, we're not here to discuss the small claims case tonight. I understand that you're his attorney, and you have a case to fight, but that is not germane to this issue.
Well, he brought it up, and the point is that he wants to pay him, he's a responsible owner and wants to pay him, he's not, not paying him. It's important that you know he takes it serious. I'm not defending the case, I'm telling you, he's paying it.
I think what we appreciate that, to Ms. Noble's point, this board
I'm not taking that seriously.
has certain powers, and I think, as I've made very clear time and time again, they're extremely limited. We do not have the authority to make him pay, to make him do things. That's, that's for courts, that's not for this board. This board will do what's within our very limited ability to do. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Borowski. So my three cents. First of all, I appreciate the complainant and his granddaughter for their willingness to, in a sense, take the, take the death penalty off the table. So I think that is beyond admirable, and quite frankly, if something had happened to my animals, I don't know if I would be quite as generous. So I think that is one thing that is amongst others, as well as my, as well as my empathy for their, for their family. I, again, I congratulate you on, on taking a very high road on that, both of you. Here's my concern, Mr. Jesus, and Mrs. Jesus, can you back? These dogs, I mean, for as much as I wanted to call them a nuisance, they are dangerous. They're not dangerous to people, from what we can tell, but they're dangerous. They've now killed, they've harassed dogs, I mean, pardon me, they've harassed horses. They, they cannot get out. It's, it's that simple. It's, they cannot get out, period. There's no ellipsis, there's no question mark, there's no whatever. I'm not willing to put the dogs to sleep right now. So, again, just, just my two cents. I don't think that is, that, I mean, that solves a problem, but I think it's a bit draconian at the, at this point. I want to emphasize at this point right now. Because I'm amenable to discussing conditions, and even though the complainant, again, I respect the opinion for going elsewhere. Um, but it's important, I think, at least for you and Mrs. Jesus to understand, where, where, again, as one, one-fourth of this board tonight is coming from. I'm amenable to conditions, at, but if this ever happens, and I'm not even talking about an attack. If they escape again, the euthanasia is back on the board. Because, because at that point, and Kelly, correct me, once we declare it, or we, if, if we declare a dog dangerous, we cannot get them out of town regardless. And quite honestly, to your point of, at this point, it would be difficult to potentially foster, foster anyway. I cannot emphasize enough how earnest I am when I say that, for the first time in a variety of different political careers, this will be the first time where I'm actually considering legitimate euthanasia based upon, and again, forgive me for being harsh, but for an ownership issue. The dogs have not hurt anyone yet. I cannot have Ms. Zuluski worried about his granddaughter or family walking around their backyard and worrying about a phone call from the ACO.
No, I understand.
We have to develop, again, one-fourth. I'm amenable to some very strict conditions, but I have to let you know with a huge asterisk, the next time that we get a phone call that the dogs have escaped, I'm not going to be as kind as I am right now.
I understand.
And again, I'm, I'm, again, just speaking on behalf of myself.
Um, to your, to your point, Mr. Borowski, I don't ever think it's the dog's fault. It never is, dogs are animals, members of our family. Absolutely, they're animals. It's up to us to get the appropriate pets, the appropriate training, the appropriate precautions, and whatnot. In all the time I've ever been on this board, I think once this, this board has actually put a dog down. It's not a pleasant thing to do.
It's horrible.
One of my concerns is, which I think is in line with Mr. Borowski's concern, I don't want to have another resident of town come before this board and say, my goat's dead, because we didn't take the right course of action today. Because then, we obviously didn't take the right course of action today, because another goat's dead, another horse has been harassed, another grandchild is afraid to go out, and that's not right.
Or God forbid a child get bit.
So, and I'll go back to something that your attorney had referenced earlier about taking people's property. I think there's a limit to that, and when the property destroys other people's property, as far as I'm concerned, all bets are off the table. When someone's property makes someone else's grandchild afraid to go outside, all bets are off the table. So I think we all have rights, but those rights have limits. And when those rights infringe on others, that's where the line is drawn. I do have other concerns that are in line with Mr. Borowski's, what happens if they get out again? And I can ask you a very difficult question. I, I, I know, there's no question, you love your son, and you hope your son will come home. If your son comes home, what then if your son lets the dogs out? If that's how they got out, is that gonna be another concern? And then I'll go on as far as shelters. So, yeah, finding a, a, a shelter or an adoption agency can be difficult, if dogs are known to bite, but not impossible. Shelters and rescues will look for homes or experience, and they will know the dog has food aggression, or child aggression, or whatnot. You can shake your head and know all you want, but I'll tell you, from all the rescues I've dealt with, they actually have taken them. They have asked if you have children in the house, because this dog, if they're trying to rehome, has food aggression, or had child aggression. So that's fine. I'm talking from personal experience with rescues.
We do have a letter here dated May twenty-ninth from Kelly Flynn regarding her suggestions as to what to do. I'm, I'm wondering if, um,
Well, we're not, we're not delivering until the hearing's called.
No, no, I just wanted to, to point out that her suggestions are in here.
Okay, thank you.
And they're excellent suggestions.
Yes, they are, absolutely.
I just want to add something else also.
Sure.
Well, Kelly, um, she did come to the house, and I did ask her, I'm willing to work with her, I want to work. That's why we asked her to come, we wanted her suggestions. She said she couldn't give us anything right now, she had to go home and think about it, and she never gave it back. But I am willing to work.
Okay.
I want, you know, I don't want my dogs put down, we're willing to do what we have to do. And the problem was, I hate to say it, it was my son. No, I know, it's, it's my fault, I'm taking the blame for it.
Believe me, I get it. Here's the issue, though, and again, and again, forgive me for the rest of the board, is that in a sense, I'm giving you an opportunity to make a decision, to say, do you want to keep the dogs? If the answer is yes, then I'm willing to work with you on that. However, you have to understand the consequences of that decision. That if they get out, that we're gonna have a much different conversation later on. Mr. Zuluski, his granddaughter, his family can never worry about this again, ever. And if, I'm not trying to be pedantic, I'm not trying to sound holier-than-thou up here. But as a dad, I can't imagine my daughter being worried to be in the yard because something happened. That's why I say, if, I'm not trying to sound overly stern in any way, it just, I just want to impress upon you the gravitas of this situation, and how big of a deal it is, at least to me personally.
I understand.
Okay. Kelly.
I did consult with legal counsel regarding this. And I know, I did talk to the DeJesuses about surrendering their dogs to a shelter. I do know that this one particular shelter, I did speak to them, they know the whole situation, they would be willing to take the dogs. But when I, when I spoke to the lawyer for the town, he said that if they were willing to surrender the dogs to the shelter, it could be done before they were deemed dangerous, and you could stop the hearing. Because if you felt as though the dogs, now, we cannot order the dogs removed from town, that is against the law. But if he, if the family decided that, you know, they would, the dogs. But if he, if the family decided that, you know, that they would, the dogs would be better off, yes. And, and, and the, the condition was that the dogs would be separated, because I believe that they're acting as a pack now. And they would be adopted to responsible Siberian, it's a Siberian rescue group, so that's, they specialize in Siberian rescues. And, because once they're deemed dangerous, then whatever order we give, we give here today, follows that dog to wherever they live in Massachusetts. And it, like, the lawyer said, it's harder to place them.
And my understanding, though, and please correct me, is that, that a dangerous dog cannot be moved out of a town?
You can't...
Or am I wrong on that? Oh, oh, is it state?
It can't be banished to another town. It can go and run in a park there, but it's still a dangerous dog.
Right, thank you, okay, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, so...
You can't order it banished from the town.
So, Mr. Chairman, I suppose that's what I was getting at, Mr. Jesus, and what I would potentially ask, unless you've already made up your mind, for a thirty-second recess to discuss that option with, with your attorney, with Mrs. DeJesus, because if you come back and say that you were willing to keep the dogs, again, I, again, just speaking, and I always say that, just speaking for myself, the, the consequences of that, I, I think I've been very clear.
Mr. Jim?
Yeah. Again, I just want to reiterate how, I, I, I know this is very difficult, I too am a, a dog, a dog owner, but I would encourage you to put the dogs up for adoption, because I think by default, if you don't, you're signing their death sentence. Because it, it's just, if you look at the pattern, things happen, you know, the what-ifs, and then we have to live with up here, the what-ifs, if, if the dogs get out again, and God forbid, hurt a, a little kid next time. And what you'd have to live with, and I know, trust me, I know it's a terrible, terrible position to be in, but I really encourage you to think about putting the dogs up for, for adoption, and, and I, I just really think it's the best, best choice, best option.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion for a two-minute recess, so that, uh...
Uh, well, you can't, I was basically gonna suggest...
I can, but you'll ignore, but that's not...
You can't really ignore, but no, but, but reasonably, if there is no more testimony from anybody here, the natural force of action would be to close the hearing and allow the boys to deliberate anyway.
Okay.
So is there any other testimony? No, so, hearing on...
One moment, just a moment, uh, just from Kevin.
Yep.
One thing that hasn't been talked about is if, if, right, if, if he were ever to get the dogs back, what about, would you put, well, you'd be ordered to, but put them on a tie-out? If they're out in the yard, they should also be on a tie-out. So now you have three, three layers. You've got physical, the invisible, and a tie-out. I mean, that's part of the remedies anyway, under one forty, one fifty-seven.
Since all conditions are on the table, let's put it that way.
Just suggesting that there's a, there's more to do.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So hearing no other testimony, we will...
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
With a motion second to close the hearing? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries, and after the hearing is closed, there will be no more testimony. We will now have deliberations on board, unless you'd like to have a recess.
I would love to make a motion for a two-minute recess, so that legal counsel can confer with his clients. Unless we already know.
No, we don't know, but what he was telling me was that, that there's somebody in here to testify about the dogs with his grandkids.
No, we...
Mr. Savoyer, but he, I had said the testimony, but I had said it was, we were done.
So there's no more testimony, the hearing's been closed.
I will tell you that I, just for myself, I appreciate the fact that there has been no personal issue with the dogs, and I'm, I'm, I don't want to say confident, but knowing the history, there's been more dogs. Sorry, I'm done.
He would've said, "Disgruntled, just play with the dogs," that there would've been a problem.
My bad.
Yes, so, uh, the board has options right now. The board can either take action, decide on a course of action this evening. The board can continue this to another date and talk to counsel, if the board so chooses. The options at the board's discretion are disposal of the dog, euthanasia within ten days, removal of the dog from town within ten days, continued restraint of the dog at the owner's expense, as outlined in the board's order, or you can take no steps as of this hearing, or still, um, continue to another date and seek town council advice.
I'd still like a eight-thirty-second recess, if possible.
Kevin, we'll file with a quick recess?
Or two minutes, whatever it takes.
Two-minute recess?
As long as we adhere strictly to two minutes, because we don't have other business tonight.
Yep, we are in outline, sorry for our...
So we'll take a two-minute recess?
Okay.
No, he's...
I'm choosing to rest.
Okay.
I'm pressing at that.
We're going to continue the conversation, deliberations on the dog hearing, so I will, I'll just repeat the, the board's options. The board's options are euthanasia for the animal within ten days, removal of the dog from town within ten days, continued restraint of the dog at the owner's expense, as outlined in the board's order, or take no steps as of this hearing, which actually is an option. Also, to continue to another meeting, so that we can consult with our own counsel. So you have a lot of options at your disposal.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, and I would prob, I'm, I'm not sure if we need help from Kelly or others on this, is that, I don't, I mean, I know it's, this is what it says, but I don't believe we can actually force someone to give up their dog for, uh, to, to remove them from town. I think that we can ask them to voluntarily do that. So, I mean, it's, it's a small nuance, but I don't want people to think that we can order someone to say, "You have to get rid of your dog." Uh, I, I know that's what it says, I don't think, Kelly, correct me. Yeah, I was gonna say, they changed it.
You cannot order the dog removed.
So the removal from town within ten days is, should be deleted from our...
Yes, correct. That's my one value, I...
Through the chair?
Ms. Noble?
I'm not sure if, if this fits in with the parameters of our options, but I would like to give the DeJesuses time to, to consider the options afforded to them this evening. And which would mean that the, the two Huskies would stay in quarantine. I know that the attorney said that it's a constitutional violation, but frankly, I think that's a bit of a stretch at this point. We will agree to disagree. And, and, and give the family, obviously, there's a lot of emotions here tonight, and, and give them time to, to sit down and talk about everything that's occurred, so that, because they do need more than two minutes to make their deliberations on this as well.
Do they?
Do they?
If I, if I understand, it would be more time for them to consider surrendering? Is there anything else for them to consider during that time?
Surrender means to the Husky rescue.
I think it's basically surrender, or, or roll the dice with, with what the, with what the majority of the board wants to do.
We have two more weeks.
Wait, are you asking for two more weeks? They just want to know how much time, I, I think they want it shorter.
Yeah.
Short time.
Our next meeting is June eleventh.
So I believe the board could continue to the eighteenth, but dog, and Kelly can correct me, could only remain in custody if the DeJesuses agreed to the additional time in her custody.
Well, I did not unilaterally make a decision on that. I did consult with the chief in Oxford, and, um, the chief in Charlton was away at that time. I did consult with lieutenant Dowd, and we did also speak to actually three different lawyers that all told us to not release the dogs. So I did not unilaterally decide to keep the dogs.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then it is within your rights that you can make a motion to continue the duties, to deliberate, to talk to counsel.
And, and give the DeJesuses time to...
That's if they need it.
If they need it.
Yeah. So, Mr. ... Oh, that's a good point, actually, yeah.
It's actually up to you.
You're right, isn't it?
You want to continue for two weeks.
Yeah.
This is true.
So, yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd probably say, through you, you know, if, if, if counsel and the DeJesuses are comfortable providing an answer tonight on which direction they would like to go, we can probably handle at least some of it right now, or we can wait till the eighteenth.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you the conversation that we're having. Based on what the animal control officer said about the two dogs, the conversation we're having is surrendering one of them. You know, surrendering Kato, the, the, the...
I want to roll the dice.
Older, the male, surrendering the older male. And, well, so if we were to do that, then, well, fill out paperwork, and then the dog can at least be moved from quarantine to wherever this, this rescue is.
Mm-hmm.
So they, if they're amenable, they would work with Kelly on getting that dog to the Husky rescue, and then the DeJesuses would keep the other Husky, which is not a problem.
Well, that's assuming. I mean, yeah, it's still a big assumption that, that Kato's the problem.
It, it is, but, um, through, through the chair, I do recall what, what Kelly said about the male dog seeming to be the more aggressive one.
I, I don't know if I'd say more, I, I have never seen him interact with other animals.
Uh-huh.
Um, they're not aggressive towards me down at the kennel.
Okay.
He just seems more calculating to me, and, um, also, when, when the goats, when we found them in the pen with the goats, Kato was the, Jade came running up to me.
Uh-huh.
And, um, Kato was the one that was, ran over to the fence and started pulling on the fence with his teeth, and then started trying to go under it, and he prevented him, Bob prevented him from leaving. So I, I do believe that he's a little more, um...
Astute, scared?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Honestly, I mean, I can see the clock ticking.
Do you, do you think he's the alpha?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely the alpha.
Definitely.
Because I have seen him kind of cast to me.
Okay. Okay.
Could I make a suggestion? I would be all right if the one dog went to the rescue, and Kelly was a hundred percent satisfied how the other one was contained, if, if they got it back. And maybe you could set, like, Kelly with all of their, for every couple of weeks, for six months, to make sure nothing changed.
I think at this point, it's really up to the DeJesuses around how you want to handle this. Or honestly, I know it's a very emotional thing, I mean, it's really up, to be frank, it's really up to us, but I think we want to partner as best we can, and if you need more time, I'm fine with more time, because I want to make the right decision. Sorry, Jim.
No, no, that, that's fine, so, it is this board's decision to make what course of action. And if the DeJesuses are amenable, if he's amenable, that, it's all well and good, but this board's gonna have to make the hard decision.
That's us, absolutely.
Whether or not we want to continue for two weeks, give Kelly time to contact the Husky rescue. That's up to you. If you want to euthanize, if you want to let them stay, this is your decision to make.
I do not want, I mean, with all deference to the complaint, I do not want the dogs euthanized.
So...
Quite, quite frankly, I'm wondering if both dogs could even potentially stay together under the right circumstances, quite frankly.
I don't think so.
I think, quite honestly, a better idea is to separate them. But, again, that's...
My personal feelings are along the lines of what you just suggested, the separation of the two dogs, particularly removing the alpha, removing the male, which I think, even per Kelly's comments, could alleviate the problem. And then if, if the female Jade showed good behavior, and I would frankly also let the chief know, hire a trainer. To come in and work with you on training your dogs, I like the idea of the tie-out as well. So even if this board decides, and the, and the DeJesuses were amenable, to putting Kato, the male, to Husky rescue, keeping Jade, and having Jade on a tie-out, personally, I would still like to know that they're going to invest in hiring a trainer to come to their house and still train them on how to own and train Jade and any other dog they have.
I'd like to, absolutely. I'd like to put off, regardless of declassifying them as nuisance or dangerous, for, at, for two weeks, until the DeJesuses have a better idea around how they want to proceed.
So you would have to make a motion, or someone would have to make a motion, however you want to proceed.
Through the chair?
Ms. Noble?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this for two weeks for the sole purpose of allowing the DeJesuses to work with the Husky rescue organization.
Via Kelly?
Via Kelly. Sorry, I don't have the name of it right here.
It's Patriot.
Patriot Siberian Husky Rescue? So, um, to work with that particular entity, to come up with a remedy, vis-à-vis separating the two dogs, and to come back in two weeks and see how far the DeJesuses have progressed with that plan.
If the Husky rescue agreed what they said. Second, if they don't agree, that takes that off the table.
Yes.
I would say second for discussion. I would like to also add that if that could be, that if that A is agreed to, that B, if that is expedited, that the other dog get returned to the family as quickly as possible.
So we have a motion and a second.
And, and I will amend my motion to include that.
Oh, thank you, Deb.
Be for your own.
I did, I'm, sorry, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Uh, if you, I'm sorry, I know this is ordered to, if you could just inquire of each of them, the DeJesuses, we might have a solution.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
I just would, I prefer that it come from them.
Sure. I'm okay there, I mean, Deb, if you're okay, I'm okay.
Yeah. Do you want me to draw my...
Question before them, the question that you sort of have before them, but I'll restate it, is you work with ACO to surrender Kato for a, a living rehome, that they're gonna find a place for him? And that Jade would be returned home with, certainly with research and stuff? And that's what's on the table, if you want to agree to it, now's the time?
I have a question about returning Jade to home before any decisions been made about... The board still has to make a ruling.
Correct, that's what we have to figure out, yes, absolutely.
Right, so, I, I don't know if...
So Jade would not leave your custody until this is finalized, and, and that would be...
Which could be right now.
It could be right now, or it could be, you know, you maintain the male, they take Jade home, and the male stays in custody until it goes to rehoming, and the rescue finds a new home with a big farm or somewhere he can just run through without hurting people or dogs or forces.
No, we'll figure it out.
You get my point.
On the rehoming, do we have to do that route, or if, what if I knew somebody that would take him?
My concern, honestly, is that that dog's in Charlton, that's a concern to me.
Leaving the town, if I could find somebody to take him, leaving the town.
I'm, I'm, through the chair, I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah, there you have it.
Although I appreciate where you're coming from.
Right, so the dog would have to go to the Husky rescue, who, who, to her point, specialized in rehoming Huskies in appropriate conditions.
All right, we agree to give Kato.
So, the DeJesuses have agreed?
Okay.
Please, no, no, I'm sorry, David, I'm, I'm, I'm stepping in.
No, it's fine, but at some point, we'd like a decision from them.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, um, Attorney Cohen, it would appear to me that one of your clients is very upset. I don't know that she really wants to speak, and forcing her to might not be in her best interest.
Well, we could wait two weeks.
No, I get it.
Mrs. DeJesus, would you rather we continue this for two weeks?
She doesn't want the female to stay locked up and lose any more weight or get any second than she is. She wants it resolved, she's just having a hard time.
I'm personally...
So Jade, if we come to that conclusion, then Jade would be returned to you.
I, I would consider classifying Jade as a nuisance dog.
Yes, just do what they want.
One recommendation would be that, and Deb, and I, I know you have a thing on the floor, so forgive me.
It's okay.
Would be, Kato is separated and put in, under Kelly's supervision, assuming that it can be fostered, or whatever term we want to use it. And in the meantime, we could vote to, to earn the side of caution, make, as a Jade, classified as a nuisance dog, which is not a dangerous dog.
Of course.
It's a nuisance dog, it allows us a lot more options, and, which, which we can then add conditions either now or in two weeks, but to return that dog home, to, again, so that's separating him regardless.
Yeah.
And then in two weeks, quite honestly, we, you know, if Kelly has time to go out there and investigate the behaviors, we may see relatively quickly of, that the Kato was the instigator, for lack of a better term. So I would be completely fine with that separation, removing the beta dog, and bringing, and, and allowing that dog back home.
So I can remit, reverse my motion.
Amended.
Amend my motion to state the following, I would move that the male dog, Cato, be-
Remain in custody?
Removed, removed from Mr. DeJesus's custody, remain in Kelly's custody.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
He, he, he would have to, um-
Surrender, yes, that, that, that's what I would say, I, I would move that Mr. DeJesus surrender Cato to the ACO for the sole purpose of having the dog rehomed through the Husky Rescue Organization, mentioned in her letter dated May 29th, that the female dog, Jade, be remanded back to the custody of the owners, and in two weeks' time, um, you will submit a report to us, letting us know-
Please.
Please, how the situation is going, so that we can revisit the issue in two weeks.
That's right, that works.
To make sure that Jade is-
Yeah, you know what, yeah, that works, at least for me, I mean, because that-
Well, then give me a second.
Second.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. You want to change it again?
No.
Thank you.
I, I did want to, I did want to mention that, as, um, Ms. Noble had mentioned, our ACO has provided us a letter with excellent recommendations, and I would ask that the dog being returned home needs to adhere, well, they need to adhere to the second portion of that letter, like, the recommendations that you make if they're home.
I amend my motion to state that the owners, the DeJesuses, adhere to the list of stipulations in the May 29th letter submitted by the ACO, which will be provided to the DeJesuses and their counsel.
Um, I don't believe that we can ask them to adhere to any orders, unless they are deemed either a nuisance or a dangerous dog.
And, we would ask them to adhere to such stipulations because we would declare Jade a nuisance dog.
Which is, which is not dangerous, second.
Good, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. The only discussion I'll add is, I would urge you, because that's all I can do, urge you to hire a trainer, to work with you and Jade. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
So, please work with Kelly on, on, uh, well, you don't have to, work with Kelly on anything that needs to be done regarding surrender, and then also Kelly, work with you on getting Jade back home.
Kelly, any tomorrow?
Well, it's conditional on if they follow the, um, recommendations, and I think a lot of them, they do already have in place, and I don't think it would take them very long to completely do those recommendations.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm hopeful that it would be within a day or two.
Great, so if they can, if they can do it that quick.
No.
So if you can make sure that Mr. DeJesus gets the reverberant recommendations, make sure it's done quickly, make sure Jade gets home quickly, and then please also let this board know how fast Jade got home and that everything is, is done as required.
Yeah, Kelly, I'd like-
Start a report.
Yeah, I'd like to expedite taking that dog home as soon as possible.
I would love for the dog to go home as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, DeJesus, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, thank you.
Let us know if you have questions, or Kelly first.
Okay. So, at eight thirty, we're gonna take our seven fifteen, which is, uh, Four Score, amend host agreement and host and development agreement.
Yeah, you're up.
Four Score has asked the board to consider an amended host community agreement that will allow for retail sales of adult use marijuana products after its site. At the board's last meeting, Attorney Silverstein explained that there would be a special permit available, under the cap of Four Score to seek. They also reviewed the changes regarding the host agreement to include retail marijuana. Really, worry. The board was asked to review the agreements prior to tonight's meeting. We were asked to place on tonight's agenda, Four Score held their community meeting on June 3rd, 2019, per the town administrator, what are the board's wishes?
It's a very-
You're gonna make me read it again?
Through the chair, it's a, it's a, a very small amendment, takes up not even a page and a half.
Where are you?
It's on page thirty-one.
Ms. Chairman, do you want me to read it?
Please.
Let me know if I'm wrong on this. Uh, First Amendment to the Town of Charlton and Four Score Holdings LLC Host Community Agreement. This amendment, the amendment, the host agreement, the agreement, is entered as of June 2019 by and between the Town of Charlton and Massachusetts Municipal Corporation with a principal address of 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass., 01507, the town, and Four Score Holdings LLC and Massachusetts Limited Liability Company and any successor in interest, with a principal office address of 144 Sturbridge Road, Charlton, Mass., 01507, the company. Whereas the town and company entered into agreement on March 12th, 2019, which sets forth the terms and conditions of the company's operation of a licensed facility solely for the purpose of the cultivation, manufacture, and processing related transportation of cannabis and cannabis products at 144 Sturbridge Road, Charlton, Mass., 01507, the property, and, whereas the town and company desire to amend the agreement in certain respects to, uh, permit retail sales of the property. Now therefore, in consideration of the above promises and of the mutual covenants hereby herein contained and other consideration, the receipt insufficiency of which are hereby acknowledged, the undersigned parties agree as follows, for those at home, this is the specific amendments. Except as specifically provided in this amendment, each and every provision of the agreement remains and is, and is in all respects in full force and effect. The second introductory paragraph is hereby deleted in its entirety and placed with the following. This HCA represents the understanding between the town and licensee, the parties, with respect to development of attractive land with improvements located at 144 Sturbridge Road, the property. The development of the property is also subject to a development agreement, the development agreement, intended to provide benefits to the town in order to secure approval for licensee to develop and utilize the property for its intended use of a licensed marijuana cultivator, marijuana product manufacturer, and marijuana retailer. The first recital is hereby deleted in its entirety and placed with the following. Whereas licensee plans to seek a license from the Cannabis Control Commission and to commence a significant capital investment in development of the property for use as a licensed marijuana cultivator, marijuana product manufacturer, and marijuana retailer of the facility, and, the second recital is hereby deleted in its entirety. Section three of the agreement is hereby deleted in its entirety and the following section number headings shall be changed accordingly, and finally, the reference to section four in section six of the agreement, now section five, shall be changed to section three to properly reflect the change in number headings. In witnesses hereof, the parties heretofore have caused this agreement to be executed as a sealed instrument and signed in duplicate by their duly authorized representatives on a date first indicated above, or in, or in common English, we're basically modifying it to say that they can sell retail.
Thank you, Mr. Varowski, graduate from speed reading school.
You like that?
Yeah, so. So, that being said, comments or discussion from the board?
Through the chair, I know we talked about this a lot last time, um, again, I think the only jeopardy for this board over town is that potentially, depending upon the future, we could have three. I think that is a risk that I am willing to take, uh, based upon the fact that we don't know what's going to happen, uh, in, in the future. I think Four Score has been good partners with the town to date, I would expect that to continue, because we'll be watching very closely, and, um, again, I think it's zoned properly, I think it's, I think it's in a good location on Route 20, like everyone else, I'm always concerned around, uh, traffic on Route 20, but if we're not going to encourage development and, or even more specifically, economic development on Route 20, I don't know where that we're supposed to, uh, expect it in town, so I am fully in favor of this. My only caveat would be, I'd be curious if the applicant would be amenable to putting some type of date in here, basically saying that if you don't have approval by such and such, that you need to come back and, and talk to us, so that, that this is an open-ended, for, I'm not saying you would all keep this open for five years, but I, personally, I like the idea of saying, of amending this to s- to say, look, if you don't have approval by the CCC in six or nine months or twelve months, then you have to come back in, in front of us, and we have to review where, where it stands.
Yeah, and, and for me, I would agree with Mr. Varowski, one of my big issues with open-ended, um, we're seeing today, actually, and I don't like what may be, there are many reasons we'd love to have Four Score, uh, as, as one of those permitted, um, I for one don't like what may be preventing other businesses-
Correct.
That could be now exercising their rights to operate their business, so.
Evening, um, yeah, we would absolutely be amenable to, to putting a, a timeline on it. Um, I'm not sure what the board has in mind, uh, I just, you know, want to, with respect to the timelines, my understanding is the Cannabis Control Commission, you know, from the date that you file your application is running, you know, anywhere from a six to nine month backlog, just to get the provisional license, and you can't build out until after you get your provisional license, so then you have to commence construction, um, and then, once your construction is complete, then you have to get your staff in place and, you know, actually get the site ready for operation, and then they come back out for final inspection reviews, and you have to wait a couple of months, most likely to get back on their agenda for your final approval. Then they come back out again after you've gotten your final license for the post-final license inspection, which is really the final inspection, and then you can open, uh, with three days' notice from that date, so.
Are you accusing the state of being bureaucratic?
No, no, no.
Through, through, excuse me, through the chair?
Ms. Noble.
Hi, how you doing, Dan?
Good, thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
So, I know from our Marijuana Advisory Committee meetings, talking to your staff, they had indicated that they wanted to be up and running by 2020.
That's, yeah, that's still the intention, absolutely.
Okay, okay, but I also know that Green Gold Group wanted to be open a year ago, and it has taken them a full year to finish doing everything that, that was requested of them, including most recently by the DOT.
Yeah.
So realistically, realistically speaking, based on the timeline you just gave me, do you really believe that your facility can be up and running in 2020? Realistically, I mean, come on.
You know, I, I think that is certainly our goal.
Right, it's, it's a goal, but based on current parameters, are we looking at 2020 or are we looking at maybe early in 2021?
I think, you know, Q1, 2021 would probably be a bit more realistic of the-
Okay.
You know, just, just given the uncertainties surrounding the, the state permitting process, I mean, if, if it moves quicker, um, through the CCC, certainly-
That, that, yeah, certainly that, that would be ideal.
It will improve our timeline, but yeah, presumably, you know, we're looking at a provisional license sometime at the end of 2019, which would then give us, you know, construction window in early 2020, presumably, um, and then, and then, you know.
And then, and, and even then, you have to go through, you know, additional inspections and licensures.
That's right.
And getting up and running, and fi- and-
Final approvals to go through with the, you know, conditions set forth on the planning board approval, um, we fortunately don't need a new curb cut, so I, I think the team's not anticipating, you know, a DOT, um, work to be done at the, at the last minute, like Green Gold, but, but yeah, I would, I think, you know, Q1, 2021 would be a safer, you know, more conservative estimate.
Okay.
How would the board feel, I'm sorry, Deb?
No, no, I'm, I'm just, you know, trying to project out-
Yeah.
How long this host agreement would be good for, before you would have to come back and see us again to, to revisit it, so re- realistically, I'm thinking-
Eighteen months?
Yeah, eighteen months, probably.
How about, I'll make a motion to approve, oh no, are we still discussing? I, I was gonna say 12/31/2020.
I would go, I would-
I would go down January.
I think you're being generous with the state.
I would, see-
I, I hope this, I hope that you can achieve your goal.
How about February eighteenth, that's my birthday.
I would go for twenty-four.
I was actually-
And do it in eighteen to twelve months, great.
No, I was actually gonna suggest, um, March 1st of 2021.
No, I'm sorry, I mean, I, I was trying to be, uh, like, that wasn't equipped, I was like, yeah, I'm fine with that.
A little under two years.
Was it, how many, how many days in March, was it thirty, thirty, thirty-one?
Really?
Thirty-one. I will make a motion, um, unless there's further discussion, actually, no, regardless, I, I will make a motion that contingent upon, we, developing language, that this will expire unless it's, unless it's all approved on March 31st, 2021, um, to, yeah, basically, there you go, that we are, that we, we know accept the, accept the amendments and for all intents and purposes, bless, uh, Four Score to come into town and, you know, hopefully get some good business points.
Well, oh, no, never mind. Go ahead.
Do tell.
I was reading ahead.
Oh, that's what happens.
Okay.
So anyway, that is my motion, so basically, unless you have full approval, this would need to be reviewed, or, or it will, it, that, it will, it will expire 3/31/21. If you're still going through it, I'm just being honest with you right now, I'm still gonna talk to you about it, I just want some type of, like, you know, date in there.
Sure, so, just so that I understand, um, it's, the board's looking for final license from the Cannabis Control Commission by March 1, 2021.
Yes.
Before we revisit the-
Before we revisit the host agreement, yep.
Yeah, and I think all the boards realistically asking for is, if for whatever reason, because it is Massachusetts, and we know, it didn't look like it was gonna go beyond that date, just simply come back before the board, like, and say, hey, we know it's gonna go beyond this date.
Of course.
Nine, eight, ninety more days, that's where we are, that's pretty much looking for the waters.
Right, right. Do we, do we want March 1st or March 31st? I'm fine with that.
Um, I would say March 1st.
March 1st, okay.
That gives us time to, um, to schedule the meeting sometime in March.
Yep, all right, so, I'm not sure what I said before, but the, I make the motion, uh, contingent upon an expiration of 3/1/21 to approve, uh, the amended host agreement.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the amended host agreement?
No, we just gotta figure out the language with the waters.
Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Deb, good call on the, uh, on the Q1.
Thank you guys very, very much.
Thank you for your patience, Dan.
Yes.
Something about good things kind of leaves you way behind.
Uh, and I see that our, uh, planning board petition is on, uh, for-
Jean is here.
Excellent.
Yep, and so my suggestion is to work very closely with them.
That we will.
Yeah, we don't want your complaints.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Next item on the agenda, oh, moving to new business.
Yes.
I'm, I'm catching up, I've got a hundred and sixty pages.
Hey, just for the record, can we note how, how quick I was with that, I just want to throw it out?
Oh yeah, you read it really fast. All right, first item on our new business, I need these, electronic signboard, policy and bid award recommendation. As you know, town meeting approved the funding for electronic signboard, I'm gonna read slower than you, which will replace the current signboard at the library. This sign required a special permit slash variance from the zoning board of appeals, which we did apply for and were approved. At the end of the zoning board of appeal period, a resident contacted various town officials with concerns, but never appealed to decision of the zoning board in time, in the timeframe required. One of her concerns was that the sign should not be allowed, because she thinks it's in a historic district of the town, and doesn't want the sign on 24/7. The town administrator explained that the area the sign will be in is not a historic district, uh, see the information provided by Kurt Meskis, and that we, the town, were working on a policy that would limit the times and style of the sign. Attached is the policy for the board's consideration, electronic display, 40 Main Street, the library. In writing this policy, we have addressed some of her concerns, such as turning on and off the sign at designated times, off at 10:00 PM, and resume at 6:30 in the morning. Our bylaws prohibit her concerns about animation. Please note that the sign, given its proximity to the center of town, will generally consist of black and white lettering for informational messages. Special town-sponsored town-wide events, including Old Home Day and Earth Day, may display color, but only for seven days preceding the event. You are asked to approve the policy as submitted. Bid award recommendation. Quotes were requested in due April 17th, 2019, for the purchase and install of electronic signboard to be installed in place of the existing manual sign in front of the library. Three quotes were received and thoroughly reviewed by Jeff Saul, Information Technology. The following is his recommendation. Lowest quote, phew, $31,856. Guthman Signs did not meet all the criteria requirements. Second lowest quote, $34,137.89. Diversified Sign met all criteria requirements, recommend to award. The highest quote was for $34,470 by Graphics Unlimited. See the attached quotes and evaluation sheet. Uh, the town administrator would agree with Mr. Saul and recommend the board award the bid to diversified sign in an amount not to exceed $34,137.89.
Ms. Chairman, would you like to do that first, for the, I mean, the bid award?
Uh, yes.
As opposed to the policy, it's up to you.
Yeah.
Ms. Chairman, I would make a motion that we award the winning bid to diversified sign, because they met all of the requirements for $34,137.89. because they met all of the requirements for $34,137.89.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the bid award. Any discussion?
Just a reminder, what was the total amount that was approved at town meeting? Was it, I believe, was it forty thousand, right? Okay, just wanted everyone to know that.
So it's, yeah, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the bid award? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Next we'll do the policy. The policy will be, use and duration. The following groups may make use of the electronic sign board, municipal government, government, community events, nonprofit organizations, if space allows. I'll try to read as fast as I can. The sign, given its proximity to the center of town, will generally consist of black and white lettering for informational messages, special town sponsors, town-wide events, including Old Home Day, Earth Day, may display color, we did this, but only for seven days preceding the event. The display may not have more than two messages visible at any time, the display may not change more than once a minute. The need for official notification by the town of Charlton has precedence over all other displays. The sign will be turned off each evening at 10:00 PM and resume at 6:30 each morning. No animation will be allowed per sign bylaw 200-5.6E (9). No sign shall contain any moving, flashing, or animated lights or visible moving parts, wind-driven, whirling, or spinning signs, just like a tongue twister, or signs with so-called whirligigs are prohibited.
I've been waiting all night for you to read this, whirligig, I'm like alive.
I didn't write it, I'm just reading it. Application. Application will be on a form provided, which will include the organization's name, responsible party, contact information, date of the event, proposed wording, and layout of the sign panel. The applicant will sign the application, acknowledge that the town will be held harmless. All nonprofit organization events will need approval by the town administrator for display. The office of the town administrator, and you can see the form, they fill out the organization's name, contact phone, length of time, they print the message, and then it will be signed for approval.
Ms. Chairman, I think it's a really good start to a policy. My assumption is that over the years, we may wanna tweak it as people ask questions or whatever, but I, for now, I would make a motion that we approve the policy as written.
I would second, as long as I hear David say whirligigs again.
I will, yes, I will, I will amend that motion, that you have to say whirligig again.
We have a motion and a second, whirligigs.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any further discussion?
Through the chair.
Ms. Fiewer.
Where it says the sign will be turned off each evening at 10:00 PM and resume at 6:30 AM each morning, why do we have to turn the sign off?
Oh, um.
If, if it's not flashing, or, or, isn't it less effective than the sign we have now? If it's, if the information can't be seen at night?
Well, we, we did receive a complaint from one of the residents who asked that we turn it off in the evening.
But is it actually intrusive? Because I think it's doing a disservice to the people in the community who are looking for the information, unless, unless it truly is bothering someone, a resident in the area, somehow, some way, but because there are no, what is that word, whirligigs? Whatever. I, I guess I, I have, I just would strike that, that would be my recommendation.
I don't think it's necessarily a high-traffic area, between midnight and 6:30 in the morning.
People work different shifts. It's right here in the center of town, and there are some houses around it.
You may have some answers.
There is no prohibition in our bylaws for it to run 24/7. I was involved in some of the discussions and some of the concerns of the neighbor who brought this forward. Unfortunately, as was explained to her, they missed the appeal period, they did not attend the zoning board of appeals here, and that they were invited to by letter, um, because they were in a butter, um, so this is a, um.
Accommodation?
That's a good word, an accommodation to that. When we were proposing this sign and working through it, we had these, some of these discussions about what the bylaw allows as far as color or not, color is allowed, but, um, you know, there is some neighborhood concern apparently about it, and the accommodations are being made. Certainly, you're a policymaking body, and you can, you know, make whatever policy changes you want. I had been working on, um, you know, as we, we delved into the sign policy for the cemetery, I was trying to do a, a comprehensive policy, but, uh, the town administrator suggested we take this in, in little bites as we needed, and hopefully we're gonna be able to take all of these sign, sign policies, coordinate them together into one document instead of having, so that I have direction on, on some signage that we deal with all the time, and the citizenry is clear as to what, um, you know, is allowed and not allowed because of public and private property, so.
So we could amend this policy as needed.
I appreciate the explanation. And one, one other question, who's gonna be turning it on and off? Is that our Jeff, our IT guy?
Automatic.
Timer.
Automatic. It's computer-driven. So, um, it has intensity regulation on it, so we can, uh, roll the intensity down as nighttime comes along, so it's not glaring.
That's a good idea.
Okay, it has lots of features, somebody with a laptop, um, radio control interface between the buildings and, and the sign, so it's an automatic feature.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Comments, concerns?
Now, does the motion still stand that we're gonna turn it off at 10? Because my preference would be to still turn it off at 10, and then honestly, in six months after it's on, if it's not a problem, we could reassess.
Yeah, because no one's amended the motions.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with that, you give a good reason, but knowing that the, you can turn the light up or down, and I mean, that's, if we have the sign, I just feel like we should be using it, but I understand if it's intrusive, I get it, so.
Yep. Do you have a motion and a second?
Yep. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you, thanks, Kurt.
Awesome.
Thanks, Jeff. Next on the agenda, Knights of Columbus request for toll road. St. Joseph, Council of the Knights of Columbus, Charlton Council Number 11379, is seeking to conduct a toll road at the intersection of Route 31 and Masonic Home Road, using the required amount of traffic cones and barricades on Saturday, October 12, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The request has been forwarded and approved, but she's Maxfield, contingent upon the following safety precautions. All volunteers must wear bright-colored vests, yellow, orange, green, or red, whilst listing donations. Orange traffic cones must be set out on Main Street and Masonic Home Road for a distance of not less than 50 feet on each respective way prior to reaching the toll station. A minimum of five traffic cones on each roadway should be put in place at a distance no greater than 10 feet apart. Signs warning voluntary toll road ahead must be erected on both Masonic Home Road and Main Street, not less than 75 feet from the toll collection area. Should the board approve this request, the town administrator asks that you consider including Chief Maxfield's recommendation into the motion.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
I'll be right back.
Okay. The next item, CMG proposals for Dresser Hill Road, 54 North Main Street.
Give us the executive summary, Gary.
Yep. Please find attached two proposals from CMG Environmental, Inc., for environmental services for the period coming July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, for the old highway barn located at 54 North Main Street and the community center at Ford Dresser Hill Road. In FY10, CMG Environmental reduced its fees for both sites and will continue to hold the same 2% discount. Gary Magnussen from CMG will be here to review the proposals with you. These costs are paid from the environmental account.
Hello?
Gary, how are you?
I'm well. Uh, Ford Dresser Hill, we'll talk about first. As everyone here, I believe, knows, we're still in the DEP system, um, because we have contaminant concentrations in the groundwater above standards, and one home, a couple homes that still aren't connected to public water. Last year, we requested, uh, $5,996 for these services, you guys approved that, um, we've invoiced you $2,896. I don't expect any more invoices, so we're less than 50% of what we proposed with scope last year for that. We are recommending a budget of this year of $5,996, again, um, for that same project, and we do need to sample the groundwater on that site, so we would probably be closer to that budget this year, but it's been under budget significantly the last four or five years.
And through the chair?
Ms. Broussard.
So, Gary, for all intents and purposes, you, you're doing the same thing you did last year, but you are doing additional sampling, correct?
We had budgeted and sampled last year, we didn't do it.
Right.
I'd have that off, but yes.
But the same.
Same, same exact scope.
Yeah, same, yeah, so everything's staying the same.
Correct.
Gotcha. Uh, I don't know if you want motions separately, Mr. Chairman? It's up to you.
Remind them.
Okay.
Separate or together?
We're gonna combine them.
Okay, sorry. Um, so for 54, um, North Main Street, the highway garage, last year, we proposed a budget of $8,753, which was approved, and we've invoiced the town $3,441.75. So again, less than 50% of the proposed budget. Um, all the work is compliant, DEP's happy with what's being done, we're just doing the least amount possible for you at this point. Trying to get that last house connected, I've got one more house here, if we can get one more connected, this one we can close. So we are recommending a budget of $8,753 for this year.
And through the chair, Gary, that's 14, 749 total, right?
I wasn't planning on doing both of them, but I'll trust you on that one.
Never trust a banker.
Six. You know what, let's do it. Write it out.
Old school.
Do you want a calculator?
I've got one, we'll do it, you know what, I can still do math.
Well, being, being an engineer, I'm kinda hoping so, because if you said no, I was gonna.
You should be able to do some math, right?
Is this old math or new math?
This is old math.
Old math works.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I would say 14, 749.
Every once in a while.
So, through the chair, um, with the board's pleasure, I would like to make a motion that we, that we approve the proposals for, for Dresser Hill Road and 54 Main Street, uh, in the aggregate total of $14,749.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? No, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Just give us updated things, I'll take your.
Yeah.
We're getting close.
I was gonna say, I mean, it's.
I'm sorry?
We're getting close.
We are really close, I'm trying.
Not that, not that we don't like to see you.
Thank you. All right, I'm getting up there.
Papaginos, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I should scroll to that page.
Page 82, if it helps the, the board.
Eighty-two.
The next item on the agenda, Papaginos, Mass Pike East and West, change of ownership, common vic, coffee, food license. We've been notified that Papaginos, Inc., and DeAngelo's sold all their assets to New England Authentic Eats LLC, DBA Papaginos, and DeAngelo, as a result of the Chapter 11 bankruptcy filing. They hold a common vic license at both sites. You are asked to approve the new common vic licenses for both establishments, Mass Pike East and West, changing the name to New England Authentic Eats LLC, DBA Papaginos. Everything else in their licenses remains the same.
Through the chair.
Ms. Noble.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve the new common vic license for both establishments, Ma- Mass Pike East and West, changing the name to New England Authentic Eats LLC, doing business as Papaginos.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Favor? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Well, chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda.
Well, we're only on page 91, Mr. Chairman, not at 158, so we got a long way to go.
I know, I know. Review modification of special permit and site plan, ForeScore, 144 Sturbridge Road. The planning board has provided you with a copy of an application submitted to them by ForeScore Holdings LLC, 1 International Place Suite, 3700 Boston, Mass. 02110, for modification of a special permit and site plan approval to include a medical and recreational retail marijuana establishment. The applicant has received a special permit for marijuana cultivation and processing in an existing 20,000-square-foot building with a proposed 1,000-square-foot addition. The property is located at 144 Sturbridge Road, Assessor's Map, 30, Block C, parcel 13, and is zoned IG, industrial general. You are asked to review and provide any comments no later than June 5th, wow, 2019. Notice dates 4th, but they allowed the board until tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any comments?
No.
All right, there's nothing to do here, other than submit your comments if you have any, or concerns. Review of site plan, Charlton Realty Co. Trucking Center and Repair Garage, 299 Sturbridge Road. The planning board has provided you with a copy of an application submitted to them by Charlton Realty Company LLC, P.L., Box 33, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566, for site plan approval to operate a trucking center and repair garage on property that was formerly used as a concrete mixing plant. The site is located at 299 Sturbridge Road and is owned by Craig Moran, Sturbridge, Mass. The parcel, uh, subject, yeah, the parcel subject to the application contains approximately 3.67 acres and is listed as Assessor's Map 31, Block D, Lot 2. Said property is also zoned IG. You are asked to review and provide any comments no later than June 5th, 2019. Again, notice dates the 4th, but they allowed the board until tomorrow morning. We'll move on to old business. So, the first item on our old business. Interesting reading it as someone else. Chairman Singer asked for this to be placed on the agenda. All I'm gonna do is you authorize, the board authorized me to contact town council in our quest for an independent auditor, investigator, whatever you wanna call it, and he came back with recommendations.
Thank you.
An extra, three of those recommendations, only one of which is recommended to me that we should lean toward because they have no history with the town, they haven't been involved in anything, so it's a clean slate, and it's made up of former judges, so it'd be a great source. And if this board chooses to use JAMS, that we could have the town administrator reach out to them and have them submit multiple names for this board to choose from, so we could ask them to give us three different names, and we could, uh, choose from those.
Through the chair.
Ms. Noble.
What does JAMS stand for? It's an anagram for something.
It's a nonprofit.
Well, that's.
I know. If you click the link right here, it says learn more about JAMS.
Okay. Well, thank you for providing this, I'll look forward to researching them tomorrow.
Thank you.
And, and where again did you get this recommendation from?
Town council.
Mr. Cosgrove?
Mr. Cosgrove, right.
Thank you.
And the investigators that they would provide are themselves former judges, so they're used to this kinda work.
And so, Ms. Chairman, maybe we just table this for, uh, the, for the 18th, well, we may have a chance to review it and just kinda take.
Yep. So we will ask the town administrator, if everyone found it, Karen and Brad just walked in, to put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Do you think it's possible to get some kind of a quote?
Uh, yeah, we can do that too. So we'll ask her to put this on the agenda, well, we could ask her to reach out to JAMs and get an estimate, I'm sure.
Would that be depend upon scope of work, which I think we probably still have to discuss a little bit, but, I mean, you know, maybe just a ballpark, just to ask. Can't hurt us.
Through the chair, I'd also like to ask if they can provide a sample of their work, a writing sample perhaps?
As well as potentially other towns that they've done, like something similar for?
Referrals.
Exactly.
But looking at the samples that they've done for other towns. Yes. It's a good idea. I agree. And then we have a better idea of what we really want and need. And then we'll have a, you know, hopefully we'll have a better idea of the product that they can produce for us. And again, we also need to discuss the finances and where the money's coming from. This is very true. What we're looking at. We don't really know that right now. Yeah, we kind of ballparked the figure not too long ago, but you're right, we definitely need to revisit that amount.
Yeah, we ballparked the figure. The ten thousand dollars that we ballparked is exactly what we had to spend the last time we had to do an investigative audit to a different source. So, all right, so at your direction, we will ask the town administrator to put this back on the agenda for two weeks from now in the interim. Reach out to JAMs, find out what JAMs stands for.
Cool, go ahead.
Try to get samples of the work they've done for other communities. Try and get at least even a cost estimate, give us a ballpark or a range, as well as referrals. Okay. The next item on the agenda, sex offender registry and, I don't know why to put residents, but at the board's last meeting, in discussing, in discussing, the Sex Offender Bylaw Committee and Mr. Borowski have made a motion that we work with the police chief and our cable access coordinator to see if it's possible to post sex offender information because it's readily available online. Ms. Noble said she would like to see what policies these other towns have on the books before we start putting pictures up on the internet. Mr. Borowski was asked if he'd be willing to come back with a sample from another town and also a list of communities that already put sex offender information on its cable access. I also had a a conversation with Chief Maxfield regarding this, and he stated that there are specific cautions for this. He had concerns about putting them up on our own as offenders come on and off the roll. Liability if they were found to be innocent, if it's still on our system, or they may change levels, such as go from level one to level three. Liability if we have it wrong. The chief suggested putting a link to the state registry for sex offenders on our website. That's, that is what he does. Chief Maxfield, Maxfield will be present for the conversation.
He and I had a nice talk, so I can follow up.
All right, so, Mr. Borowski, as far as that goes, do you want to continue without the chief here, or do you want to?
Yeah, because I think, I think I can fill it in with the board's indulgence. And again, I'll be very brief on this because I think I can come up with a, with a happy compromise potentially. So the towns that currently do it, just a small sample around us, are Webster, Auburn, Milbury. Sutton purposely does not do it, according to their chief, for actually very similar reasons to what Chief Maxfield had mentioned. That for all intents and purposes, the concerns, and again, I don't want to speak for Chief Maxfield too much, but I would hope he would correct me when I'm wrong, et cetera. It's really, it's really both resourcing, to actually find time, who could be dedicated enough, from, let's say, the police department, to always keep this updated because people are coming off, moving in, moving out, et cetera. People should be very much aware, and I posted it on my personal websites, et cetera, that we do have sex offenders working and living in town. And there's a state registry that notifies this. So what I would recommend as a potential compromise, in the meantime, until we could potentially figure out what we want to do with resourcing, as well as the overall bylaw committee, which they're two distinct things, but let's be honest, they're, they are somewhat related topic-wise. Maybe that's like a topic of conversation that could be, you know, brought up around, you know, how, if or how that could be maintained on a go-forward, whether it's Drew, whether it's the police department or others. What I would recommend in the meantime is that we work with Drew to basically put up a link with some language that the chief approves of that would basically direct someone to the state website to do a query. That way we know it's most up to date. There's no question of people moving in, moving out, getting stale information, et cetera. Because again, I mean, Chief Maxfield brought up some good points. I mean, I know other towns do it different ways, but I think for now, this will at least get us in the right direction. And again, it will both educate the town, but at the same time, it'll also minimize any resource constraints that we have because we all know people, honestly, people are pretty busy. So I would like to make a motion with board's indulgence that we work with Drew and the police chief via the town administrator to put some type of notification up on one of the local access channels with a link with some basic information to the state website. And with that, that's, again, I think that would probably get us going for now.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, I would like to point out that right now we do post the level three sex offenders, the picture, the whole rap sheet, if you will. I believe it's over at the library in our own town hall here.
And then the police station.
And of course, the police station, yes. So just for the public watching, that they can look there too.
And again, personally and eventually, I would like to see it online, but again, I completely understand that, again, there's only a finite number of resources, finite number of hours in the day.
And I think.
No, I was just gonna ask, who puts, who puts the postings up right now? I'm just curious. Because I know.
It might be Dan. I mean, Lieutenant Dan, sorry.
Okay.
We can find out.
Oh, no, it's. Yeah, it would make sense that it would be somebody from the police department. But when they're posted, is there some sort of disclaimer there posted alongside it? Do we know? No, and I did, I actually, I contacted, when I was on the Cape, I noticed on their local access channel, they scrolled the entire rap sheet. And I talked to a lieutenant down there and they said it was a pretty simple process. And when the level threes move into a community or move out of a community, they have to go and file with the records division at, and then they, like you were saying, most communities only have, fortunately, less than a handful, if that. So it was, and I think you said they updated it maybe quarterly, but they really, they never had had an issue. And it's just, you know, they used to, I guess, put things on Facebook, but that became a little too burdensome. Yeah. But just, I would like to see us ultimately get to what you originally wanted to do.
Yeah, I think this is step one of a, of a potential multi-generational plan.
And I'm wondering if once our new website is up and running, if it will be easier to put things on and off the website as they're updated.
That's one of the things that the chief said, that he wanted to redesign the overall police site in general, or the police component of it, so. Yeah, I think it all comes together eventually.
Yeah, I know that the staff here at the town hall's been getting trained on how to use the new website and changes can, well, it's supposed to be. The way we ask for it is that changes can be made by a designated person in each department, and those changes are instantaneous. So hopefully, you know, as we keep moving forward, we'll get better with this whole technology thing.
That's all.
Hopefully, you know, information technology is power.
Exactly.
And for me, this issue is long needed attention. If you, if you think that there are five, and this is right from the state, if you think there are five level three sex offenders in your community that you see close on the wall, that means there are fifteen. If you see a town like the neighboring community that may have one hundred sex offenders registered, that means there are three hundred. Because the actual number is three times what you see. Because the only thing we can post are the ones we know about, the ones that go unreported. So it's a major, major issue. And I think the more we educate the public to this, the more information we can put out there, the safer our communities and our families will be.
Yep.
And, Mr. Chairman, to that point, I've received a couple of questions. So just to allay any fears, there wasn't any incident, at least that I'm aware of, that was the catalyst for this. This was really the board taking a proactive approach to say, what can we do to further educate the public? So don't think that something happened, that things are being hidden, or there's some conspiracy going on. This is literally of members of the board and the board as a whole taking votes, saying, how can we better communicate with the public? And that's, and that's all we're trying.
And protect awareness and protect our community.
Correct.
And for me, you know, it's always better to be proactive.
Absolutely.
As opposed to reactive.
So.
So we have a motion and we have a second.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
On, just because we're getting ready to roll out on the website. Is it okay if we start on the website with just a link and not put all of the files on, or do you want the files to be put on the web and then somebody's gonna have to update those?
I would defer to the chief on that, to be completely honest.
Yeah, I would defer to the chief and to the committee that's gonna be formed.
Right.
Before anything goes up there.
Right, but the goal is, I think from the get-go, if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Borowski, what he was seeking was to at least at this point in time have up there a link to their online database, as well as at least some basic information. This is a level one, a level two, a level three, this is what qualifies them. At least some basic information. We can flesh it out beyond that later, but at least having some basic background.
Yeah, correct, that's exactly right, yeah. And then again, like everything else, we'll tweak it to make it better as time goes on.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Drew, in advance.
The work, yeah, you're gonna have. Are there any committee reports?
No, the Marijuana Advisory Committee had to postpone because we didn't have a quorum.
Okay. We'll move on to the B U S policy review. One through eight.
And for the record, we're officially at page one hundred and two, so.
We are making progress. So Finance Director Donna Fabio Leal is asking the board to review the following policies and approve. One, appendix one, policy adoption slash revision log. Two, appendix two, municipal calendar. Three, appendix number three, indirect cost calculation methodologies. Four, appendix four, investment policy statements. Five, forecasting. Six, indirect cost allocation. Seven, investment policy. Eight, travel reimbursement policy. And Ms. Fabio Leal is here to answer any questions the board may have.
All right, so one through four are just appendices of references even in prior policies that you've approved. This kind of brings it all together. And then five, we get into forecasting. That is a new policy that came out of the study that was done just before I arrived here from the state. The indirect cost policy. This is how we currently do the indirect cost. I know there's been some, I've had some conversation with the water sewer superintendent about changing. But I want to at least have the policy in place before we decide to make a change, and then we can change the policy if you all want to change it. But at least have it documented what the calculation is. The investment policy is actually one of your policies already, so that's why it looks a little bit different. I tried to show where the changes would be to your existing policy. Obviously, when it's complete, it'll go through the edit and get rid of all the crossouts and. And then the last one I had, those were all the ones that were from the state. This last one I have here is one that I created because it comes up all the time. It's the travel reimbursement policy, how to tie that so it moves constantly and attaches to what the IRS puts out every January, that on July first, it'll be whatever was set in the previous January. That gives departments enough time to get it in their budget for the next fiscal year, and it moves and doesn't become stagnant. I think the rate that they're using right now is probably two or three years old. But if I can attach it to a moving spot with the IRS, then I can automatically adjust as that goes up or down. And I also just put a few things in about, people ask me about meals or lodging, whether they can include a tip or not, so I just put some basics here. I would never reimburse for alcohol, but I would allow for a reimbursement of a tip of twenty percent. And they have to have receipts. And I just put in for air burn out that I've actually seen very much of that since I've been here, but it does come through occasionally. I think the chief just went to a conference last fall in Florida, so just wanted to put some ground rules down on travel.
Through the chair.
Mr. Borowski.
Donna, my only question is, and I may be looking at the wrong version, was under the investment policy, I don't see any of the strikeouts that you're talking about. Because when I read through it, it seemed it was relatively straightforward, but then when you just mentioned now that there were a bunch of edits, and I don't see those in the version we have.
Do you have the policy forty-three, it says up at the top? Or do you have like an O P E D policy?
Uh, we have, we have policy forty-three.
Okay. So like on section C.
Okay.
Investment instruments, there's some crossouts in the third paragraph of it.
No, we don't have that.
No.
No?
No.
It wasn't much. A lot of it was just typo changes. I think that's the only.
If I could ask, Donna, is a lot of this housekeeping?
Yeah.
Okay.
If there's no significant changes to the overall policy, and if it really is just upkeep, or especially on the investment policy, just because I happen to be a geek, what's the significant changes there?
So the one that is, has the most change, I'm just gonna read it, would be under investment instruments, and it would be the third paragraph. It used to have the Massachusetts Municipal Depository Trust, M M D T, an investment pool for state, local, county, and other independent governmental authorities, is under the auspices of the state treasurer. And then what gets crossed out, what you had originally and currently managed by Fidelity Investments. It investments bank or acceptances, commercial paper of high quality, bank certificates of deposit, repurchase agreements, repos, and U S Treasury obligations. It has federal deposit insurance corporation, F D I C, pass-through insurance on the CDs up to standard limits and takes delivery of the repos and treasuries. Under government accounting standards, board regulations, G A S B three, it is not considered an uncollateralized product. That would be removed and replaced with, M M D T seeks to obtain the highest possible level of current income consistent with the preservation of capital and liquidity by investing in diversified portfolio of high-quality money market instruments with an average dollar-weighted portfolio maturity of ninety days or less. M M D T investments are not guaranteed by the state, F D I C, or other governmental agencies.
All right, so we have, just for your benefit, through the chair, we have the final version, if you will.
Okay.
The, you know, changes accepted.
Yep.
Version. So that being said, as long as I didn't have an outdated one, when I read through this, I had no issue with it at all, so. Yeah, no, I'm good.
Any other comments or questions?
I was reading through the travel reimbursement policy only because I do use that at work.
Yeah.
And I found that yours was completely consistent with all the travel policies for any agency I've worked at over the last ten years.
Sounds good.
In fact, yours was actually probably a bit better because it's written very, very clearly, and I like the fact that you have a ninety-day limit in there for when people can submit, because otherwise, these receipts will just sit around.
And you get prior year bills turned into a thing, yeah.
Yep.
Is fifty-eight cents the government allowance right now, the maximum?
Yep.
And it'd be nice if we do that. My company, they don't give you the maximum, they give you like half. So, yeah, and then my last company did also. So you basically, I never submitted, I'm like, so you're basically trying to do it twice, to you for half and then the government for the other half. And I'm like, just, you know what? Keep it, I'll do it once in tax time.
And occasionally, just so you know, the mileage reimbursement rate will fluctuate. It has gone down in the past. It is quite, quite high right now, fifty-eight cents per mile, but it has gone down occasionally.
Right, and that's why I wanted to tie it to something.
So, Mr. Chairman, with the board's indulgence, I would actually like to approve these en masse.
Certainly.
So I would make a motion to approve all the policies that we have in front of us, listed from appendix one all the way down to the travel reimbursement policy.
I'll second that.
And thank you, Donna.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Donna.
So the only thing remaining I'm working on from that original study is O P E D. So there's two O P E D policies. One involves investment, one's just the discussion of the O P E D, and then a trust fund document, a trust document. And I thought I was ready to bring it to the board, but when Robin was reviewing it, she had some questions that we had brought up with town council. And we were not on the same page, and I said, you know what? I'll just set those aside until summer, and we can work on those in the summer, because O P E D is a lot more complicated than the rest of these were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. Next item, I will read in her absence, the town administrator's report for the meeting of six four nineteen, flood insurance rate map. Attached is a revised flood insurance rate map for Charlton provided by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The map has been revised for unnamed tributary to Glen Echo Lake from just upstream of the confluence with Glen Echo Lake to approximately thirty-three hundred feet upstream of the confluence with Glen Echo Lake and an unnamed area of flooding in area on the left overbank of Glen Echo Lake and approximately one thousand seventy feet southeast of the intersection of Brookside Drive and State Highway thirty-one. Expansion of the senior center. The town administrator had a discussion with Elaine Mataris, director for the council on aging, who stated that they wanted to expand the senior center downstairs into, in the town hall with the possibility of a new public safety building committee and the police department relocating if it's approved. They would like to consider that building as a possibility. The town administrator will provide us with more information as she gets it.
Very good.
And there is no other business that I'm aware of, unknown at the time of posting. The next meeting, we have our annual town meeting continuance, June twelfth, two thousand nineteen, seven P M. at Charlton Middle School. The regular board of selectmen's meeting will be June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty P M. here in the selectmen's meeting room.
Are we meeting prior to the town meeting? There's no need, correct?
No, are we just basically going to call it back in the center and continue where we left off?
Just checking. Don't want to be late.
Yeah, don't be late.
Mr. Chairman, one topic for a future meeting, only because, because this directly ties into town meeting.
Yep.
Was, assuming there's no shenanigans and the, and the initial vote stood for the safety building complex, in the next month or so, we should probably get with the building committee to talk around scheduling.
That's a good idea.
A debt exclusion question.
So we should, and shenanigans aside, as a former moderator, I would think that there would be no allowance for reconsideration because the rules are very clear. For a town meeting in time, you cannot, or the town administrator really does not have to put it that way, allow for any reconsideration on any issue unless new information that was unknown at the time of discussion, there's no cause for it. If all of a sudden they said, but this wasn't known at the time, that may be cause. Other than that, there's no reason for reconsideration, she probably wouldn't allow it. Of course, it's for me, not on.
That was excellent. So again, maybe sometime in July, you know, that we just start talking about it.
So I would ask you, would you do me a favor, email me?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Karen and Mary and Robin.
Yeah.
We'll get that on there.
I do know we have.
I do know we have quite a number of policies that are pending, that we're, we were gonna revisit them in June, like, given our, I'm not suggesting at our next meeting, but maybe we can have that for July or August.
I think going forward, looking at the length of some of the meetings, and actually, the list is getting very long, that we should divide and conquer and say, alright, one night, we're gonna go to midnight, let's take five chunks, let's do these at one meeting, these